We do have quorum, but before we start, I just want to acknowledge I have a constituent, a constituent of mine, Sean McConnell, that's here with guests from Ireland, and I want to welcome to the City of Toronto Council. Welcome from Ireland. Thank you. Okay, members, we do have a presentation this afternoon to introduce Toronto's inaugural Youth Poet Laureate, and I would like to call upon Mayor Chow to speak. Mayor Chow?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm very excited to introduce Shahada Jack, who has been appointed by City Council as Toronto's first ever Youth Poet Laureate. Yeah. Shahada's appointment marks the culmination of a process that started late last year as the Toronto Youth Cabinet celebrated its 25th anniversary. And to recognize the occasion, members of the Youth Cabinet proposed the creation of a new Youth Poet Laureate who would serve as a literary ambassador for young people across the city. The Youth Cabinet worked with city staff in Toronto's marvelous Seventh Poet Laureate, Lily Allen, to define a new poet model in which a talented youth, a young poet, would work with other young people to elevate the status of poetry, language, and young writers by inspiring and engaging them to share their stories through written and spoken word. And I want to thank Lily Allen and the Toronto Youth Cabinet under the leadership of Stephen Mancys for championing this important new position. The position was created to honor a young writer or spoken-word artist aged 16 to 27 years old who has written on themes relevant to the city. The city received more than 30 applicants from young poets eager to make their mark. And it was not an easy task selecting from such an impressive array of passionate young voices, and I want to thank all who applied and shared their exciting work. In the end, the poet laureate and Youth Cabinet members nominated Shahada, a 20-year-old bilingual spoken-word artist and activist who used her poetic lens to explore human rights, the Black experience, and the challenges of adolescence. Shahada has performed on more than 100 stages, including at the Toronto International Festival of Authors and Wood Blanche just last weekend. And she recently released her debut, a novel, wow, a novel already, and a single, okay? When she's not busy writing and throwing down rhymes and rise, oh, edutainment, or other local poetry slams, Shahada is working on a bachelor's degree in journalism at Toronto Metropolitan University. I also know that her grandfather happens to be here. He's the Consul General of St. Kitts and Nuremberg, and I know you're, there he is. You must be awfully proud of your granddaughter. It is now my pleasure to introduce Toronto's inaugural Youth Poet Laureate, Shahada Jack. Come on and give her a big round of welcome.
Good afternoon. I would like to say thank you to the city and the Toronto Youth Cabinet for this immense and so significant opportunity for our city and the youth that reside in this city. This opportunity is a responsibility that I do not take lightly. It is an opportunity to open doors for so many youth in our city whose voices deserve to be heard and celebrated in the fabric of the work that we do. I figured there is no better way to commemorate today than to share a poem for you all. If you're ready, can I get some snaps? All right. I wrote this poem for our city. A home to the daughters of intersectionality, uprooting the chains of assimilation from their family trees. I wrote this poem for our city. A home to the little Black boys whose DNAs are the manifestations of their ancestors' wildest dreams. I wrote this poem for our city. A home to the little Black girls who are the testimonies of their mother's legacies. I wrote this poem for our city. A home to forgotten heroes whose names should be written down in our histories, ingrained in our memories, cemented in our streets. Scarborough, Jane and Finch, Regent Park, too many of our communities sharing the same stories. I wrote this poem for our city. A home to too many fathers who have outlived their sons. Too many mothers who have outlived their daughters. I wrote this poem for our city. A home to children named pain, joy, justice, and resilience, the foundations that fuel our purpose for generations. I wrote this poem for our city. A home to youth who deserve to know that they deserve so much more than to just survive, who deserve to thrive in every opportunity presented to them, who deserve to thrive and rise in every probability despite what the world has forced upon them. I wrote this poem for our city. A home to endless possibilities. The birthplace of diversity where culture illuminates every aspect of our reality. I wrote this poem for our city. A home like no other. The birthplace of revolutionaries who have opened doors for young women like me. I wrote this poem for our city. For my city. Thank you.
Members, before the recess, I reviewed a number of urgent motions without notice to be added to the agenda. Do we have 18 members? Yes?
Yes.
If we can have everyone take their seats so we know if we have 18 members. Counselor Fletcher, can you, can you please take your seat because we want to introduce your motion? We need 18 members. Do we need the mayor as well?
I'm here.
Oh, you're there. Okay. All right. Okay, so who's first? Yeah, you're gonna, pardon? You can't see it?
No, I can't see it. Oh, is that on? I...
Okay, there you are.
This is a request for city solicitor to attend the T-Lab, and it's urgent because of the deadlines.
Okay, on favor, show of hands, opposed, if any carried.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm just waiting for the item on the screen. Similarly, looking to request solicitor to attend the T-Lab, and the timing is reason for urgency.
On favor, show of hands. And Counselor Morley, you have another one?
Thank you, yes. Additional location on the Queen's Way. We're looking for representation at T-Lab. Again, due to urgency is due to timing of the appeal.
On favor, show of hands, carried.
Thank you.
I have a motion 91 to 101 Raglan Avenue. It's a technical amendment to the bylaws 1049, 2022, and 1050 to 2022. Motion is urgent because the applicant is imminently about to execute a section 37 agreement.
On favor, carried. Counselor Fletcher.
Thank you, Speaker. I have a full amendment from staff about 1117 Danforth, 1125 Danforth, which has to do with limiting distance, et cetera, et cetera. So this is for an affordable housing project. I'd like to place that.
Counselor Morley. Counselor Moise.
I have a motion. Okay, I do have a motion. It's urgent because it's a time-sensitive matter. For affordable
On favor, carried. That's it. Okay, members, I will now take the release of polls. The clerk will open the speakers list in CMP, and you can place your name on the list. Nobody, right? Later on, okay. All right. So we will now go back to the mayor's first key item, which is EX 17.5. We were going through questions at the time, so the next question would be from Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Speaker. Good afternoon. Through you to staff, the airport at the island was open in 1937. Is that correct?
Through the, through the speaker, yes.
Along with the Molton Airport, same time, same date, 1937?
Approximately, yes.
That was a function by the city council of the day?
Counsel, I'm not aware of the history, the detailed history around that. I'm sorry.
Oh, I see. I'm surprised, actually. So it was, council approved the airport. Let me then ask the question about, in the report, it talks about the next step for the rez. It goes on to say that council's decision-making step of the rez is largely determined by Ports Toronto, which will complete an EA assessment and identify a preferred option. Are we not identi, have we, have council, this report, is it not identifying an option? So how does this reflect with respect to the report in that Ports Toronto would identify the preferred option?
So through the, through the speaker, Ports Toronto will continue its environmental assessments, and results of that are not yet known. Council, the recommendation before council today is for option one, which is thought to be by staff a phase towards either option one, or option two, or option three. So depending on the outcome of the environmental assessment process, the planning process by Ports Toronto, Ports Toronto could go ahead and complete the EA with a preference for either options two or three, but then implement option one as a first phase.
Speaker, I think my connection was cut off there for a moment. I didn't hear the answer.
Repeat that answer, please.
Yes, absolutely. So the, the report that is before Toronto City Council today recommends resa option one. So as Ports Toronto moves forward with its environmental assessment process, it has the option, should it select options two or three, to implement option one as a phase.
I don't know if you can hear me. For some reason, I'm not able to hear Mr. Stonehouse's answers. So let me ask this question, assuming that you can hear me. There's a requirement that all parties are responsible for making the decision. I wanted to ask then, why is council simply being asked to make this decision? Should all parties not be involved in terms of the final decision, in terms of the options?
So through the speaker, each of the parties will have to, will each have to weigh in on which tripartite agreement changes they are prepared to make. For the city of Toronto, the city council is the decision-maker. For Ports Toronto, it would be Ports Toronto's Board of Directors, and for Transport Canada, it would be the minister.
Okay. May I then, so the, the agreement is going to be amended. Is that, is that correct? In terms of whatever decision is made, while it's not a long-term aspect, but it will be amended as, as it relates to the decision the councils will make today. Is that correct?
Recommendation number one recommends a very small amendment to the tripartite agreement to allow for the land mass extension.
And so why is the public not being invited to participate in that process, however small or minor it may be?
Through, through the chair, or we did have our public consultation meeting. The results of that meeting and the survey are before council for today, and this is council's decision to make at this meeting.
Right, I appreciate that, but Counselor Candelwell asked the question about citywide survey. I'm just wondering why we would not have included a much broader area of the city in terms of consultation.
So through the, through the speaker, we were tight on time. The engagement that we did was limited in nature. In, in future, as we engage on the larger questions associated with the airport, we, we will be much more comprehensive. We will offer in-person and, and virtual options, and then we will also, I think, be in different geographies in the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker.
Counselor Holiday, questions?
Thank you, Speaker. The, the discussion today involved the words essential public infrastructure. To the chief planner, what does essential public infrastructure mean?
Through the speaker, the term essential public infrastructure, I should say essential public work, is not defined in the official plan. It's been in the official plan for decades, and as we laid out in the staff report, our opinion is that to interpret the official plan meaningfully in this case, it would mean work that is necessary to ensure that the airport can comply with federal safety regulations and maintain its current operation.
But this isn't spelled out. You've given it an interpretation as staff. And the reason I raise this is because PH 15.1, essential public works is like, it's all over the report, right? It's, the whole report talks about giving exemptions for this in parkland. So I'm just, I'm, why don't we have this more sharply defined? I mean, this is a matter, could be a matter of law in courts.
As I said, it's been, it's a term that's been in the official plan for decades. It predates the amalgamated city. It was in the former city of Toronto, official plan was brought into, the city of Toronto's official plan in 2003. It's based on past experience where Lakeville was done a bit too gratuitously, I would say, without good due diligence and not judiciously. There's never been a problem, I think, understanding the intent of that point, or understanding the need to undertake some judiciousness and due diligence around public works when Lakeville may be required.
So the, the official plan change effect, do I understand this, it has to do with SASP 194? That, that's the major one that defines the airport?
That's correct.
The Lakeville is outside of the area of that SASP, is it not?
That's correct. The policy in particular states that, in other parts of the plan states that Lakeville needs to meet certain criteria, and if it doesn't meet those criteria, then an official plan amendment is required, and one of those criteria is that it be for an essential public work.
Okay. And so there are differing opinions out there as to what essential public And so there are differing opinions out there as to what essential public works is, but you've given us yours.
That's correct.
Okay. City manager, there are, I should ask, does the staff have a position anywhere about the long-term requirement for this airport? Do you have advice? Should we keep it?
So through the speaker, no. The purpose of this report was not to provide that advice.
We have no position as a city?
Oh, a position, so through the speaker, the position of the city is we've signed, we have an agreement in place until 2033. We continue to work as a, in that tripartite arrangement with the partners to maximize the benefit to the city of Toronto with the airport. So we're deeply committed to the airport as it is. If you're talking about the future extension of the tripartite agreement, we haven't stated what we would look to do in terms of that extension.
To 2033. So nobody has a position on it. So why on earth would we expect anybody to lend them 20, sorry, 60 to 200 million dollars if no one has any certainty about the future? Not even council?
So, you know, through the speaker, I, they have to do the work. The safety work has to happen. I think there are ways to do it. I think to say the position is that we, while there may not be an absolute position on what happens with the tripartite agreement heading beyond 2033, there's been no indication that we won't enter into those conversations with the expectation of modernizing that agreement.
Nor indication that we will. Conversely.
That's through the speaker, correct.
There is three options presented. So we have this gold star application process where we work with economic proposals that say, you know, hey, come to the city. How can we help you? Was our opening position with the airport and working with them, you've got these ideas, how can we help you make them a dream, a reality? Right? You've got ambitious goals for the airport. You've got some safety requirements. You've got some things to do with crossing the runway and, you know, I, you know, a taxiway, I guess, must contribute to the operations. Why aren't we helping them as our first starting point?
So through the speaker, the reality is we don't have direction in terms of helping means looking at the tripartite agreement. And so we need to do that in concert with this work. But as we've stated, it's not about choosing one or the other. This is a build process. It can be built upon. How do we get to the compliance around safety quickly and within the timeframes and within a way that we can do so while we have those larger conversations, which go way beyond the proposals that are in, that are before us today, whether it's option one, two, or three? The discussions on the tripartite agreement moving forward will go beyond those discussions on taxiways and others.
Thank you. That was your last question. Counsel Perks, questions?
Thank you. First to the waterfront secretariat staff. Oh, actually, no, to the city solicitor. The Port Authority has volunteered to agree to environmental assess, a federal environmental assessment process?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. That federal environmental assessment process has provisions in it for consulting the public?
Yes.
So it says, go out and consult the public, and that's a part of, a core part of the process?
And I believe that's underway? That's happened? Yes.
But the legislation says, do public consultation.
And they are, they are, yes, and they're doing public consultation. They've agreed to do that.
And so, you know, we as a city have a lot of experience with environmental assessments. If the legislation says consult the public, it's not there just to say, you don't tick this box. It, the purpose of that requirement is to get public advice on how to proceed with the project in a way that protects the environment and all the other goals. Is that correct?
Yes, one would assume that is one of the benefits of going out to the public.
Okay. To the waterfront secretariat, you did consult the public as part of this environmental assessment process, and you, there were a number of different ideas about what should be emphasized in the review. Could you tell me what the top three of those were?
So through the chair, certainly the environment, the natural environment, waterfront revitalization, and sorry, just a pause for a second. And safety.
Okay. Thank you. So safety, environment, and, oh dear.
Waterfront.
Waterfront revitalization. Thank you very much. Over to the chief financial officer. Much has been made about this issue of option one having the benefit of being something that could be financed without extending the entirety of the 40-year agreement, but rather just the narrow piece around the permission for Lakeville. Is that?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, there's been discussions around what the financing terms may be across all three options.
Okay. And you have stated already that part of the reason we prefer option one is that, in your view, option one is something that could be financed without extending the 40-year agreement in all aspects, or the agreement for 40 years in all aspects.
Through you, Madam Speaker. In terms of option one, there may be an opportunity to explore alternatives or ways we could bring forward a financing option that could be satisfied within the term of the agreement or a shorter term than what was requested.
A shorter term. So one of the things that the, that some advocates have said is, to finance something like this in the private market, you would need a very lengthy term. But that's not the only financing option. There are other financing options available.
Through you, Madam Speaker. That's correct. And in all likelihood, through a financial institution, you are looking at a longer term. We do know there are other programs that might be available through different orders of government, where you may not have the same level of restrictions that would apply through a financial institution.
So some other order of government could come forward with a financing option that allows us to, allows the airport to meet their need, their safety needs, but doesn't allow, doesn't require that we extend the tripartite agreement out to 2070-something.
Through you, Madam Speaker. Again, it would be subject to the terms, the ability to repay, the risk associated with the agreement itself and extending beyond the agreement, but there may be a path there to be explored.
And that risk piece that may get in the way, that risk grows the more expensive the option is?
Through you, Madam Speaker. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Fletcher.
Thank you, Speaker. I would just ask, I guess, Mr. Stonehouse. Do you agree that this is fairly complicated situation that we're in at the moment?
Yes, I would agree that there, this is a complex issue, although today's issue is less complex than the package that council will eventually need to think about in the future.
Right. And then I heard the city managers give us advice, and I'm basically going to reiterate. Your best advice is today, get option one on the table and pass because it's guaranteed, it's easier, could be completed on time, et cetera. Is that your best advice?
Yeah, through the speaker, we're focused on how do we quickly get to compliance with the safety?
With the requirement, the new requirements from the transportation.
The safety requirements.
The safety requirements. Thank you very much. And just about, I think there was a survey. I don't think the survey said, should we close the island airport? That was not a question on the survey. Am I correct?
Correct. That was not a question on the survey.
And just, there's an issue about, should we have a citywide survey? And I've heard the answer. I don't know who can answer this, but would we have a citywide survey on Pearson and making runway changes at Pearson? Is that something that we would do in the future, or that would be recommended? Who'd like to answer that without my time going ticking? I'll just leave, yes, go ahead.
Speaker, I don't know that we can answer that question, but.
Okay, so, yeah, all right. Thanks for the honest answer. But I'm just looking at airports and how we go citywide and that something happened because it wasn't citywide. I'm not assuming I'm going to have a survey that people in my board want to know about extending the runway. They'd want to know about closing it, but extending the runway is kind of a local impact. So I'll just say that. These are new federal requirements for safety compliance. I've got that right, correct? They're new. There's a safety requirement that wasn't there before, and there's a hard stop, June 2027.
That is correct, through the speaker.
So we have June 2027, which I think we'd all agree, even though I'm not great at math, is less than three years from now.
Through the speaker, that's correct.
And I think that's one of the reasons why you're suggesting option one can be completed on time. It is less complicated, less work to do. Like, the option three is five times the amount of fill into the lake, which I think, as we know from the Portland's planning and the big work there, that makes it far more complicated.
Through the speaker, yes, less risk.
Thank you. So this is also about, it's a Transport Canada requirement, but it's about safety. It's not just airport safety, or you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think it's only about airport safety. I believe it's about safety on the central waterfront. Because if something happens to a plane, it may hurt somebody in a boat. It may, there's all kinds of things that could happen. Do I have that right?
Through the speaker, yes, that is correct. I mean, the safety regulation relates mostly to landings and to takeoffs to an extent. But yes, given the proximity of the runway to the water, then there is a broader element of safety. Mind you, there are the marine exclusion zones, which exist and will always exist.
But we have been talking a lot about harbor, harbor safety, I'll call it this week, because of the ferries. And Transport Canada also has quite rigorous standards that we must live up to as a city for the standards for ferry safety. And these would be the same rigorous standards that they're now saying for an airport, correct?
Correct, and both, and, you know, both for airports and marine uses, they would be informed by international standards.
Yes, thank you. So not picking on anybody, this is just a safety issue. And this is only at a Class D for design and construction. Even if we said, yeah, go do that, nobody could start because it's only a Class D estimate. There's no detailed design of any kind that still has to happen, correct?
That is correct, through the chair. It still has to happen. The goal is for them, their goal is to have a preliminary design by the end of this year and then a detailed design by the end of next year.
So we can prove option one, the design, detailed design can get started. It can be completed by the time the safety requirement is, the deadline for the safety requirement in 2027, June. And it also gives us a time to look at all the elements on the waterfront, including how the airport best fits in a revitalized waterfront. I think that's what people are also asking for. Is that right?
That was your last question.
Through the speaker, that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last question is Deputy Mayor Malik.
Thank you very much. So my first question is for the chief planner. Can you please outline the requirement for an official plan amendment for any Lakeville works beyond essential infrastructure work and the expected timeframe for such a process?
Certainly, the process would be that Ports Toronto or the opponent would need to submit an application. We would have a meeting before that happened to outline what the requirements would be. The requirements would be focused primarily on addressing issues that we want to be sure the Lakeville would not exacerbate. For example, making sure that no new hazards would be created, making sure that there aren't going to be negative impacts on aquatic habitat, making sure that there won't be other negative environmental impacts. Once that submission came in, we would do our best to meet the statutory timeline of a decision within 120 days. That would involve review of those submissions by city staff, possibly asking questions, perhaps asking for revisions to the proposal, depending on what was contained in that information. It's hard for me to say when exactly we would bring forward a decision. It would depend on the quality of the submission and any issues that would be identified through that process. As I said, we would do our best to meet the statutory timeline.
Thank you very much, and thanks for laying that out. That timeframe would extend beyond Ports Toronto's stated date of November 30th, 2024, for a city council direction on their desired amendment to the tripartite agreement to meet Transport Canada's July 12 deadline for implementation of the runway and safety area. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's why we feel it represents a process risk to achieving the timeline. That is important in this case.
Okay, thank you very much. My next question is for the waterfront secretariat. This is mentioned in the report. Ports Toronto previously undertook another capital project to implement a pedestrian tunnel to the airport. Can you please share with us what the cost of that project was and over what time period it was amortized?
Through the, through the speaker, it was a 20-year concession, so 20 years of debt repayment, and the budget was $82.5 million.
Okay. And can you tell us the years that that, that, what year those dollars are from?
I believe that the dollars are from about 2015 or so. So it would have been around the time that the tunnel was under construction and completed, which was after the Porter jet proposal. But it's, you know, now been in operation for a good number of years.
Okay. And how far along are we in that, in that tunnel project?
I'd have to do the math, I apologize. But approximately halfway through is about 10 years.
Thank you very much. My next question is for the chief financial officer. Given the estimated cost of what has been shared with us, up to 64 million for what is being called RESA option one, and the previous Ports Toronto financing of the tunnel project, can you comment on if a similar 20-year period to amortize this project would be reasonable?
Through you, Madam Speaker. So it's likely estimated that through a 20-year, given the public information that's available, given the approaches that were taken on the previous agreement, 20 years likely would be achievable.
And can you, can you share a little bit more about what some of those considerations would be for us to understand, what would kind of land that as a reasonable timeframe?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Again, looking at the financial information that's available publicly, we would obviously need to work closer, closer with Ports Toronto to understand commitments and obligations. But based on an agreement such as that, you're likely looking at an annual repayment of in around $5 million a year compared against some of the income that they've generated, compared to some of the actions that may have been taken as part of the tunneling project. It lends, it lends itself to there being an option available to be able to meet that requirement over a 20-year period.
And my final question, just to be clear, the, that period of time, the amortization, that would be when construction begins? That's when the kind of clock starts?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And just the final question to waterfront secretariat.
That was your last question.
Sorry, construction would be, would begin on this in 2025?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, last question. Counsel Perutzah. Just one sec. Okay, there you go.
It's really a courtesy question for some of the other counselors who wanted to ask the question but weren't able to. And the question to you folks is, are you opposed to options two or three?
So through the speaker, we've been clear, there's nothing technically that we see at this stage wrong with options two or three. It's how we get to compliance. That's the question we've been asking ourselves and why it's before you today.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to speakers. Mayor Chow to speak.
Thank you. I have a motion that if I could just ask our staff to put in front of you that we're adding the words and subject to recommend a 2e to secure requisite financing no later than December 31st, 2045, which is 10 years, afterwards landmass extension, so that reads as following. So the addition is subject to 2e below in amendments to extend the term and date. no later than December 31st, 2045. And then the recommendation two is basically, let's look at the master plan. Madam Speaker, what is in front of us is not about the future of the Island Airport. Because some folks want the Island Airport closed. Other folks want it to expand dramatically with jets and maybe even more. We don't know. We are not closing the airport. I have no intention of closing the airport. And I've said it quite a few times, very publicly. I'll say it again. What is in front of us is about safety. It's about the runway. For 14 years now, Transport Canada have said that the runway needs a bit of work and that it needs to be made safe. So the airport authority, Billy Bishop Airport, said, okay, in that case, we'll have option one, two, and three. What the city staff have done, the expert recommended a runway extension that meets the safety requirement and meets the Transport Canada deadline because the deadline is upon us quite quickly. Option one is the safest and the fastest and the lowest-risk option to go. And this safe, low-risk, and least controversial plan does not require building the road that the LGBTQ community who frequent Halens Point is not happy with. And the other two options, option two and three, requires the official plan amendment, which takes more time. And the option two and three require massive landfilling of Lake Ontario, building of the sound wall, a road, and other complex construction. And all of this has to start next summer in order for us to meet the deadline. What the motion in front of you does is to say, proceed with option one. And secondly, you heard different, the airport folks said to us that we may have trouble borrowing because we would have trouble financing. We don't know that case because they do have some money. They have about $70 million in their reserve funds. Do they need more money to borrow? That's up to them. And if they do, they are saying to us that, hey, eight years is too short because eight years our lease is up. This motion basically gives the power to the staff to say, if they need more time for the lease, extend the lease. It doesn't have to be eight years. It could be 10 years. If they need 12 years in order to get the financing, let them do it. We will support it. It gives the power to our staff to work with them to make sure they have financing in place to do option one. So we're meeting the requirement of the airport folks. Now, I heard that there is another argument that we shouldn't take a position in the preferred option. And I fundamentally disagree. If a developer come and say, I want to build something on your land, or well, tripartite agreement, and part of it is our land, do we say, build as high as you want or as low as you want? It's all up to you. We can't do that. We need to say that we believe in option one or two, that it should be this high or that high, whatever. Our planners is going to comment. So our staff is commenting to say, hey, if you want to build option one, in our mind is what we believe you should do. That is, I think that is our responsibility to make, to put our position forward. Now, you also heard, master plan. We need to decide the future of the airport. Right, I totally agree. Let us proceed, working with our staff, working with the Port Authority and the Island Airport to renew their master plan because it's supposed to be renewed every five years. The last time it's been discussed is 2018. It's time to proceed with the master plan. Great, do that, but it takes a bit of time. And we'll ask the staff to proceed to work with the airport folks to come up with a new master plan. We will proceed with that. And now we don't have a worried about deadlines and that, you know, there wouldn't be enough, like, you know, eight years is too short, that we won't be, they won't be able to get the financing, et cetera. There wouldn't be enough time for master plan. No, let us give them the opportunity to have a good master plan. Now, coming up with a new master plan would require a conversation with the entire waterfront secretariat because there's a lot of business there. There's a lot of local residents. In fact, there's going to be another 100,000 residents in the area because of really Island and East Harbour. So what is the best balance? I don't know. We don't know. For us to make a decision today to say, well, let's extend it for 40 years, it's really corrupting the process because that is a longer conversation as to what should be the master plan of the future airport. So we'll do that piece and do it properly. So I believe this amendments to what came up from the executive committee should meet with the requirement of what the airport and Port Authority needs, the Toronto Ports needs.
Thank you. We do have questions for you. Counselor Burnside, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I'm just trying to understand. Are you in favor of looking into extending the tripartite agreement in terms of having those discussions and whatnot?
I am in favor of two things. Allowing, because we need to amend the tripartite agreement because they're doing a bit of landfill, even in option one. So we need to amend the tripartite agreement anyway. Number one. Number two, if your question is, what about the deadline of 20, in 18, sorry, eight years?
No, sorry, it wasn't my question. My question was, are you in favor of entering into discussions and negotiations and consultations to extend the tripartite agreement? That was my question.
For what purpose?
For whatever purpose. That's part of the consultation.
No, no.
Okay, sure. To continue the operation of the airport past the next whatever, eight years.
Number one, the airport will continue to operate. I have no problem with this, to have that continue. Number two, if the, because of the runway extent, option one, it requires landfill. So tripartite agreement needs to be amended anyway. Number three, if they need a longer-term lease, not up for eight years. It might be because they need 10 years or 20 years. Sorry?
I understand.
Okay. If they need longer time, do you want to reface the question? No, okay. If they need longer time to get the financing, we are giving the staff the power to give them a longer lease in order to make sure that they have the financing to construct this option.
Okay, respectfully, that wasn't my question, but okay.
What is the question?
Well, I've tried twice and I've already lost two minutes. So respectfully, I'm going to move on to other questions, which is, I believe, which I've heard my question.
Your question is about the tripartite agreement, no?
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
I thought I just answered it.
Not really, but that's fine. So do you have any concerns with option number two over option number one or even option number three?
One thing that I've learned as being elected for a large number of years is that the, I always take staff recommendation very seriously because they've done a whole lot of work and they have consulted with a whole lot of people. I also respect my local councillor. In this case, it's Deputy Mayor Ossman Malik. And she has taken a lot of time to do the consultation, to work with the staff, work with the Ports, Toronto Ports. I respect that process. So if the recommendation is option one, there is no reason for me to contradict the local councillors and contradict the city staff.
Well, respectfully, I would say that this is more than the local councillor. This is about the vibrancy of the city and our economy. But irrespective of that.
But we're not closing the airport. How is it hurting the vibrancy?
Irrespective of that, my question was, do you have any, would you have any concerns with option number two or option number three, notwithstanding local councillor concerns? Yes or no?
Well, I did say in my speech that option three, for example, require massive landfilling of Lake Ontario. It required to build a road and other complex construction, okay? And it also require a change of the official plan. It requires an amendment of the official plan. You and I know, you've been councillor for quite a large number of years. You and I know the official plan amendment takes time. And we do not have time. The construction needs to start in, probably in the summer of next year. The official plan amendment takes time. And we, that is why the city of Toronto said, your staff said, that in order to meet the deadline of the, that is being put together of Transport Canada.
I have one final question, Madam Speaker.
Transport Canada said it needs to be built by 2027.
Okay, Counselor, last question, last question.
I'm getting slow-walked here, but in my opinion. But let me ask you this last question. Are you aware that the airport folks, whoever's building these runways, could do option number one to start to be compliant, but then move on to number two and number three if they had the permission? So that they could get it done within the Transport Canada deadlines, but continue after that and do option number two and three?
Thank you for sharing that information.
Counselor Sacks, questions?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I want to, would you accept as a friendly amendment directing staff to go away and negotiate, but come back to council before extending the term?
No, because I think, I trust our staff that they would do the negotiation. I don't think we need to spend more time at council. This item has been debated fairly extensively at council. Lots of people have asked the questions. And I think if it is specifically for the building of option one, I trust our staff will make the right kind of negotiation.
Madam Mayor, you're aware that the city's ability to consent or not to consent to extending the term is our major leverage for getting changes to the airport operation. If we want, for example, to reduce its environmental impact, otherwise improve how life works on the waterfront. If we give that up in advance without getting anything for it, we don't have any leverage left to get the other changes we want. So why wouldn't we use the leverage we have to get improvements? Whether or not we're going to have a continuing airport here, there are improvements we need. Why give up our leverage in advance?
Oh, hey, if there are improvements that can come out of the discussion of master plan, we would welcome that.
Right, but if we give, once we have given up our ability to refuse an extension of the term, how are we going to get the improvements that you and I have discussed that many people in the public are asking for? If we just roll over and say, sure, go ahead, they don't need us anymore to make the kind of changes we want.
I'm not agreeing that we should extend the tripartite agreement for that purpose. Absolutely not.
But once it's extended, it's extended. So what is our leverage? What is our leverage to get environmental improvements at the airport if you've already allowed staff to extend the lease?
But the lease extension is only allowed to, for them to borrow the funds. And that's nothing to do with the environmental improvement that they need to do.
Right, but if we allow them to, if you require staff to come back here with their recommendation, in the meantime, instruct them to negotiate for the changes that we know we need, then we preserve our leverage and we get a better improvement. Otherwise, we just give away the, we give away the cupboard and then we're back to saying, please, sir, as the city has done for the last 40 years, without any leverage. And it didn't work.
True. Let me check with the staff to see whether they would come back and how long it would take. What I try to avoid is to have yet another big debate here regarding how long it should be and then re-debate whether it's option one, two, or three, et cetera, et cetera, which we don't need. So let me double-check with the staff and see what kind of support they need.
And in the meantime, we could actually consult the public on this critical question.
We should always consult with the public. And what I'm very pleased is that the large number of people that came to the meeting, that was a very successful consultation, both online and in person. And I do hope that, and I'm sure you have, Counselor Sacks, that other members of council took a read of what the public said because there was like 200 or 300 people that have very, very thoughtful opinions on this airport.
Thank you. Somebody took their name off. Counselor Crisanti, questions?
Thank you, Speaker and Mayor. Thank you so much for this amendment. Just a question I have. So this is saying to extend the end term date to the date necessary to secure requisite financing. So this question pops to mind. It's a substantial amount of money. We saw in the report that the estimate is in the $65 million range, which could balloon to considerably more than that. So, and then the requirement for the term, I'm just concerned that this actually would meet the requirement of the term. Did you have any discussions as to, because this is 20 years essentially, and that's it? If the financial institutions or whomever they're getting their financing from determines that, no, we need 25 years, we need 30 years, what flexibility do we have, Mayor, to make sure? Because this is critical, of course, for the recent requirements. And it's critical to ensure they get the financing. What can we do to accommodate that part if necessary?
That's an excellent question, Counselor. My understanding is when the airport decided to build a tunnel, which costs a lot more than this runway extension, they, they're, the borrowing, at the time, it was a 20-year or 18, 20 years around then. So that is a much bigger financial investment than what this is. And they also, right now, in their reserve funds has something like $75 million in their reserve funds already. So they may not need to borrow the entire 60 or 70 million.
Yeah, so, no, and I'm aware.
Which is much cheaper than what it cost them in building that very excellent tunnel that they have.
Yeah, no, it's a great tunnel. And I know they did that in 20 years, but that's then. Things could be a little different today. So is there, did you get any assurances that this 20 years could work again in this moment compared to when they did it for the tunnel?
I believe that this amount of time is more than enough. And I'll leave it for the city staff to come up with some kind of, maybe, you know, because I say it's up to. So they would work with the airport, the airport, to determine how long they need the lease for in order to get the financing.
Okay, just one last comment or question, maybe, on the reserve funds. We know how critical reserve funds are, Mayor. We have reserve funds as well. And we also have the policy or the approach And we also have the policy or the approach that we don't want to touch our reserve funds for anything other than what they're meant to be touched for. They've got reserve funds for likely the same purpose. So it could be that they can't really access their reserve funds in the way you just alluded to them being able to access. Did you get some understanding that they do have flexibility and could use some of those funds? Or do we know that definitively at this point?
The airport has known for fourteen years that they need to fix the runway. So a well-run airport, as that is, would put aside money if you know your house require, the roof needs require fixing, that you may not have immediately, because fixing roof is a bit of, costs a bit. I just fixed my second floor roof because it was leaking. It costs a bit of money.
Yep.
And you put aside money first, you know, for, for, until you have it almost enough. And you may have to go to a bank and borrow some, but you, you would. If you're fiscally responsible, put aside some money first and then may, maybe you have to borrow. It'd be nicer if you don't have to in order to, to do the fixing. So they've known for fourteen years that they need to fix this runway. So I, I do hope they use some of the funds they put aside for, for this runway.
Okay, so this is beyond state-of-good repair, you know, so this is a-
Oh, no, this is state-of-good repair because they know they need to fix the runway.
But it's a safety, it's a safety, it's a safety requirement by RESA.
It is, it is.
Okay, anyway, thank you, Speaker. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Councillor Holiday, questions?
Thank you, Speaker, to the mayor. You know, we've, we've had a lot of detailed discussion today, but Mayor, I just, I want to know, what's your long-term view of this airport? And I, I don't mean for twenty years in your motion, but how do you see, you know, a society's grandchildren using this? Do you see a future? And the reason I ask this is because so many people are watching this debate and thinking about, should I invest in Toronto? You know, what's that council up to? Are they skitterish about this? Or, or do you, as the head of council, have this strong view that this place needs to continue to survive?
Well, the airport is serving a function right now.
Yes.
Okay? And, good, I support that. It's there, it employs people. It's, you don't have to travel, if you live downtown, for example, you don't have to travel all the way to Pearson for short flights. Let's say if you're flying to Ottawa or Montreal, for example. But as to, should it have more flights? Should it have jets? I don't know that answer. The waterfront is developing quite rapidly. As you can tell, we have more people moving in, there's businesses, there's entertainment, there, Ontario Place is getting, well, some kind of a spa and, and et cetera, et cetera. You're seeing more and more development in the waterfront, including massive number of housing being built at Keyside, at the islands, over at East Harbour. So you're looking at balancing housing, businesses, entertainment, the film industry, et cetera. And the airport is one component of it. So what is the right balance so that the waterfront is as incredibly successful as it is now? I don't know the answer, which is why we need to take a bit of time, take a bit of care, to look at all of those elements, to say, what is the perfect balance? How many flights? What kind of flights? Where are the flights going to? I'm not an expert, but I believe that kind of conversation needs to take place. And it needs to be done in a way that is thoughtful, deliberate, with good expert guiding us.
Are some flights in the cards or no flights?
No, I've already said that the airport should be aware of this. What, what did you hear?
Okay, so I heard some pessimistic things, right, about balance, which kind of strikes me as taking away from the airport to give to others, but, okay.
I didn't say that, councillor.
Okay, okay, so, so the answer is yes, then. You see some flights in the future. So why wouldn't we do everything we can right now to help this airport? And I mentioned it before, we have this gold star application process where we have companies that want to locate to Toronto and we roll out the red carpet. How can we help you is the first thing we say. How can we get through, you know, the, the gauntlet of approvals and things that you need to do? Why wouldn't we turn to the airport and say, we love all your options. Sure, you got to start with number one, but we're here as a city to help you facilitate being better. And my understanding, unless you tell me there's a problem with these options, is they do good things.
But councillor Holiday, can you say right now how many more flights they should have?
It says none. It says there's no changes to the flights.
Yes, however, but however, once you invest in a whole lot of money, you, if, if you take option three, which is a hundred eighty million, is three times more than option one, then you need to have a business plan to say, in order to recoup a hundred eighty million, we need to have this kind of income.
So we're prejudicing their business plan by squeezing the options down?
I don't know.
We must be, you just told me.
However, well, what we are asking them to do right now, what is in front of us, is safety.
Is that sabotage?
It's not about the future of the airport. The fu, the airport, because I know some people want to go there. The, the item in front of us is about the safety of the airport. And there's a deadline. And the next step, once you meet this deadline, the next step is the question of the future of the airport in terms of number of-
We have no position.
-flights that it should come in. Should it have jets and et cetera? I don't know the answer of it. I don't think you do either. I don't think members of council here has a vision of what that airport should be in terms of how much it should grow. I, really, that is not what is in front of us.
Okay, tha, thank you. Councillor Mantas, questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, through you. Madam Mayor, you're saying, you said earlier that option one is the safest option. Our school bus is still going to be continuing to drive on the runway in option one?
I don't know that because I'm not city staff. I'm not the expert, which is why I'm not the one that picked which option it should be.
So have we asked city staff if they're still going to be continuing to run on the, drive on the runway?
The school bus have, have been taking kids to the, to the school for many years and I, no one have raised any concerns, safety concerns.
Could we, Madam Chair-
At least Transport Canada have not raised any concern.
Can the staff a, answer the question? Since we have them here? They're not allowed in right now? Okay. So the second question that I have relating to the first question. We heard earlier that safety in the waterway regarding planes crashing. I would like to ask, what is the probability of an accident actually happening on the tarmac and not in the water?
I am not sure that whether it should be, well, I don't know how accident, I, I'm not a flight expert. I'm not a, an engineer as to, I, I'm not the one that said that Transport, it's Transport Canada that said that the runways needs to be fixed. They've said it for many years. I, don't ask me as to why Transport Canada said that it needs to be fixed. And it, their mandate is very clear that the, the runway as it is now is not safe.
Okay.
And that's why it needs to be fixed. And the deadline they've imposed is twenty twenty-seven. And it takes about a year and a half or two years to, to do the landfill and do the extension of the runway. And in order for that to happen, this decision needs to be made now. And the decision as to how they proceed needs to be in front of council now. That's why we shouldn't wait till next year. We need to give some definitive answer to the Billy Bishop Airport and so that they could proceed.
So hearing the comments-
But it's not my deadline, it's not my call whether it's safe or not.
So hearing the comments of staff and the comments of our fellow councillors, if we took option three, let's say, where we're building an external road, so children don't have to go through a tarmac, we have a noise wall which helps with mitigation of the noise, wouldn't that be the safer option? And it could be phased in three phases?
Well, you know, it's interesting, councillor. If you ask your, the local councillor, Ossman Malik, that was at the public hearing and where the place was packed, it's interesting. The parents that have their kids going to the waterfront school did not ask for a new road to be built. The residents in the area did not say they need a sound wall. They said that they want to see option one. None of them, I did not hear any residents pushing for an expanded option three. Because by and large, some say they should close the airport, others said, if you have to do something, do the small minimal option one. I read the report, that's what the, the local residents have been saying. And I'm sure some of them have kids going to the school. If it is not safe, I, I would imagine the parents would be the first one to say, oh my God, this is not safe and therefore, please build a road. That's not what they said during the entire, they, they had the benefit of the same presentation that was given to us, where all the three options were laid out in front of them. They were given the opportunity to answer as to which one they picked. And they was very, they were very clear.
So if the residents had those, if the residents, the local residents had the benefit, but the city as a whole didn't have that benefit, wouldn't it also be-
Benefit of, of what?
Of expressing their views.
Right.
Then wouldn't it be more, could we then consider of having a poll conducted citywide?
Well, a poll could be conducted citywide when we are discussing the entire future of the airport, if you choose that. But that's not what is in front of us. We're not talking about the future of the entire airport. We're only talking about the runway.
The safety and the runway.
Absolutely. I totally agree, like if, because I understand that if you want to look at whether there should be a lot more flights and more, and maybe even jets, all of that, yes, that may impact on the entire city. Of course, of course, there will be more extensive consultation. I totally agree with you. But that's not what is in front of us. I, I know. That is why that we need more time for that conversation to take place. We need more people to be involved in that conversation.
Okay.
Right? So that maybe some of your residents would be interested in commenting and they should be consulted because it does impact on the city if we end up flying jets. Sorry.
That, thank you.
It's a good question.
Okay. Councillor Bradford, questions?
Thanks, Madam Speaker, and thanks, Madam Mayor, for the emotion. Let's start with an easy one.
The motion?
In two thousand and six, when you were an MP, you introduced petitions on three separate occasions that, quote, "call upon the government of Canada to abolish Toronto Ports Authority, close the Island Airport, and return the waterfront to the people of Toronto." So the question is, did you agree with those positions then and do you agree with them now?
Councillor Bradford, I was a local member of parliament. I'm the mayor of the city of Toronto right now.
So did you agree with those positions then and do you agree with them now?
I was a member of parliament representing the downtown area and I've represented that area. My position at that time is very clear and majority of the local residents have been saying that, that is, and I reflected their opinion during the time when I was a local councillor and member of parliament. I now is the mayor of Toronto.
I know that. So I've just, so I'm, I'm just wondering what-
So I, I, I'm trying, I'm asking, I'm asking your question.
It's just a simple question. In two thousand and six, that was your position? Call upon the government of Canada-
Yes, in two thousand and six, I was a member of parliament.
-abolish Toronto Ports Authority, close the Island Airport and return the waterfront to the people of Toronto? I think what I'm ascertaining is that was your position.
That was my position, yes, of course.
Where are you at today?
I already said it many times. I will say it another time as I've answered councillor Holiday and councillor Burnside's question. I support the Island Airport and I'm not closing it down. I've said it on air, I've said it in front of media, I've said it in front of council. I said it in front of the executive committee.
Councillor, please allow the mayor to respond.
I'm done.
Yeah, like, you, you gotta help me move through this. I know you want to run the clock, but I got some good questions for you.
I'm not, I'm trying to answer your question.
So let me ask you this. You say you support it now. Is it really supporting the Island Airport if you're putting them in a box that effectively makes their long-term operations not viable? Can you say honestly to the people of Toronto that you support the airport if you're handcuffing them into a position where their operations are not viable as they've detailed in correspondence in front of this council meeting right now? Is that really a fair position for you to take?
Councillor Bradford, are we talking about the long-term viability of the airport in front of us? Or are we talking about the safety of the airport runway?
So let me remind everyone, I'm asking the questions, but it's a good distinction. And it's one that you've been trying to make publicly to everybody in spin, but it's actually not true. It is in fact the same question. Because the RESA requires changes in terms of the lease and the tripartite agreement to be able to finance and move forward with the RESA. So my question is, do you support the long-term operations and updating the tripartite agreement? Because your motion here has a poison pill in that says, within the existing tripartite agreement.
That's right.
Right. So let me ask you, how familiar are you with the tripartite agreement?
Very familiar.
Are you? Okay. So are you aware then that the tripartite agreement and Billy Bishop's master plan are two totally different things?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Can you clarify? Because it looks like your motion wants to remove the process to update the tripartite agreement and keep it within the existing tripartite agreement. Is that, was that a mistake in the language?
No.
Or is that your intention?
No. The tripartite agreement is not in front of city council. Let me repeat. They try, well, let me answer your question. What is in front of city council is the deadline of Transport Canada saying this runway is too short. Okay? It is not, what is not in front of city council, even though I know some people want to make it that, what is not in front of city council is the long-term operation-
Yeah.
-of the airport. I don't know what is the length, how much, how many flights it should be.
I'm not asking that question.
But you are, you're asking about the long-term plan.
Allow me to ask some questions, Madam Speaker.
Councillor Bradford, please. Allow the mayor to respond.
Please allow me to ask some questions.
You asked me about the long-term plan.
Just run the clock on everyone today. It's not helpful for us to have a discourse.
Councillor Bradford, you're being rude now. Let the mayor respond.
How is this rude?
Well, you asked me that what is the long-term plan of the Island Airport? I don't know. And this is, the long-term plan of the Island Airport is not in front of us. That is why the city staff recommended that they would have a, participate in the master plan.
Yeah, Mayor Chow, Councillor Bradford has time for one more question and let's keep the answer short. Okay, Councillor Bradford?
To you, Madam Mayor. The original motion that was in front of us here today was to renegotiate the tripartite in twenty twenty-five. Your motion that you just put in front of council deletes that. Are you aware that the tripartite agreement specifies the type of aircraft that are allowed to be used at the airport and that the main commercial aircraft flown from the airport, the Dash eight Q four hundred, is literally no longer in production? And so if we cannot renegotiate the tripartite, you are effectively putting a nail in the coffin of the future operations of this airport. Will you be honest with folks in Toronto about that?
No.
Councillor, please.
Let me answer the questions two-way. Number one, their master plan needs to be updated. It will get updated, okay? Number two, the conversation that we have is about how long the lease would be in order for them to get the financing they need. We have now say, go ahead and negotiate. If you need extra years, go ahead. As to, then the third part is, what is the long-term plan of the airport? Do that conversation. Do that conversation. But you don't do it now, you proceed to do it in the future. No one is preventing, if, preventing the staff in participating in that conversation. We need to participate in the conversation. Which is why it's said that there is a master plan conversation moving forward. But the, the deadline is no longer hanging over the head if the lease is extended.
Calvi, question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Just one sec, there you go.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and Madam Mayor. I asked questions earlier of city staff about technical objections. I see that you have before us locking, an attempt to lock us into option one. Do you have a technical objection to more safety improvements that go beyond option one? That would make it safer for vehicles crossing the runway? Would no longer have to cross the runway and go around? So there's additional runway safety features with options two or three? Do you have any technical objection to those?
I take the, my direction based on the expertise of the, the city staff.
Do you have any technical objection to putting in a sound barrier? Or putting in water breakers, more breakage to make things safer?
As I said, the city staff working with the local councillors and all the folks that are in the area came up with the recommendation of option one. I am following the city staff lead to say that is the best option in front of us. Which is why the city, what, what council needs to do right now is to confirm that option. That option one is our preferred option.
Define, well, I mean, city staff have brought forward an option, but they were clear that that wasn't on a technical basis. So how would you define best option?
Well, as the city staff have defined it, they're saying it's low risk, low cost, fastest and safest way to proceed.
But safe is not in term of safest in terms of sound mitigation, sound barriers, or runway improvements that ensure vehicles don't cross the runway?
That is, I, I read from the folks that have responded, there are two or 300 of them that attended the meeting. And that seems to be the consensus. The local councillor have also supported option one. And that is the best solution that is in front of us. That, that is why the staff, city staff give you the recommendation. You can choose to ignore staff recommendation. I rather support their recommendation and say that it, it is option one. You know, when a developer comes in and say that we need, in order to be viable, to build 40-story, and it's not viable if we build 30-story. If our city staff recommend 30-story, I would say that we should make a decision to say there should be 30-story. Of course, they can do 40-story, it would be better for the, for them to get 40-stories. Of course, it's a choice before, in front of us. The Billy Bishop Airport said that they prefer option three, because it has everything else on it. Fine. But our staff said that, you know, under these circumstances with this deadline, we recommend, we recommend option one, which is why I support.
Do you agree though that the environmental assessment is still pending? I mean, you just said Billy Bishop says three, but I'm not sure they're saying that. The environmental assessment is still ongoing, which will identify the preferred alternative. So by doubling down on option one, you're saying that we know better than a pending environmental assessment and the regulatory body?
You know what I do know, councillor? I do know that the airport operators have known for quite a large number of years that they need to fix the runway. Is it the city of Toronto's fault that the environmental assessment is not done yet? Is it our fault that the environment, the environmental assessment did not get started? Until, you know, not that long ago? We are put into a situation where asked to rush a decision. That is not the city of Toronto's fault. They do, well, because Transport Canada have said, and everyone knew that this runway is not adequate.
Okay. So you feel we've been a good, you feel we've been a good actor participating in these conversations from the start?
Could they have done the environmental assessment earlier? So they could have everything in front of city council? Absolutely. As to why they didn't do that, I can't answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McKelvey to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion. The motion deletes recommendation one and instead recommends that we adopt the runway and safety option that is described in the environmental assessment. There you go, sorry, it's on screen now. That is identified through Ports Toronto Environmental Assessment and subject to federal government supporting an amendment to the tripartite agreement for the required landmass expansion. Billy Bishop Airport is, is really important. It is important to Toronto residents. It is important to the province. It is important to people that come to our city on Hope Air for healthcare. It is important to people that are in an emergency brought to our city by Orange. We can talk about the economic development that it brings. We can talk about the jobs. We can talk about many, many aspects that benefit residents. But we know that we are making big investments in Billy Bishop Airport right now. The federal government is putting in preclearance for US travel. We're grateful for that, because that will bring people to our city for FIFA, we, to visit us. We know that we want people to come to our city. We are a world-class city. And there's a lot of talk about the future of the airport, but you know what? You know who else has an airport? Mississauga has an airport. And you know what their airport does? It takes care of all of us in Toronto too. So I think that we have to all be respectful that all of us are doing our part. Toronto does their part by having Billy Bishop Airport. And I think we need to continue to show that we accept that responsibility very seriously for what it does for everybody. And I think we also have to thank our partners in Mississauga that take care of us as well. So we all work together. It is very unusual to recommend an option while an assessment is, is underway. Very unusual.
Councillor McKelvey, do you have a second motion?
Oh, I do have a second motion, thank you. So the second motion asks for the report to come back in a framework, to come back in Q1, so that if there are additional things identified through the identification of the environmental assessment, we can look at it then too. You know, staff were clear there were no technical objections to option two and option three. There is no objection to a sound wall and noise mitigation. There is no objection to additional breakwaters. There is no objection to additional runway safety measures. We should see the preferred option and we should have a conversation with our federal partners. That's how you work in partnership, you work together. We would not like if somebody came in and told our Toronto agencies what to do or how to do their job. Mississauga and the Pearson Airport would not like it if we went in and we told Mississauga and the Pearson Airport how to do their job. So I think it's important that we stay in our lane. We comment on the technical feasibility. We, we object where there are technical objections, and in this case, we haven't identified any. There's a lot of talk about costs. But let's be clear, they're not our costs. They're our cost of Ports Toronto. This is not our taxpayer money that is going into this. So it's very strange for us to be focusing so much on the cost of another agency. Again, how would we feel if people were doing that to us here in the city of Toronto? And the EA will cover finances. That is a consideration, the cost of the project. And that would be taken into account as they recommend the best option. And I think we need to keep our options open for the best option, because we are the best city in the world. And why should we settle for anything less? So I am hopeful that you will support my motion that leaves the door open for option one, option two, or option three. That leaves the door open for continued conversations with Ports Toronto and the federal government about what the best option is and the best way forward. Because we are just one signatory in the tripartite agreement. It is a tripartite agreement. We have to show we can play well in the sandbox together, that we are here in partnership. We are open to conversations. So I'm very hopeful that you will support my motion that is before you today.
Thank you. Councillor Chisanti has a question for you. Councillor Chisanti, three minutes.
Thank you, Speaker, I won't even take that. So councillor, this, so you're suggesting that they negotiate an amendment to the agreement, the tripartite agreement, to accommodate whichever option they choose best for the future of the airport? As you very clearly stated, they're paying for it, absolutely. So that's, that's, makes a lot of sense. I'm just trying to identify, and if I missed it, I'm sorry. Is there a timeline in terms of having this negotiation take place? That you, or can we put a timeline? Because you don't know how long it's gonna take to negotiate.
Well, the timelines are dictated by completing the environmental assessment, identification of the preferred alternative and the support and sign-on, sign-on of the federal government. So it is clear in my, my amendment that...
Or your second motion, okay.
Yeah, well, it's, it's clear that we're subject to the federal government supporting an amendment to the tripartite agreement. So really, this puts this in their hands to say, we're ready to go with the preferred alternative with the timelines needed to pay for that. And then we can proceed with the negotiation, the amendment.
So this essentially puts it in their hands where it rightfully should be?
I, I agree, I feel so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Chang, questions? Three minutes?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify. How do you see your motion working with the mayor's proposed extension of the tripartite? Do you see it working together? That this extension and giving them time to land where they think is best based on environmental assessment?
No, because my, my motion deletes recommendation one. So it is replacing recommendation one with this new recommendation that leaves the door open for the preferred alternative identified through a rigorous EA process and supported by the federal government.
And does it have any impact on the tripartite, the time of it? Because currently it would expire, I think in 2033.
So this is intentionally vague, because it does say to negotiate an amendment. So that is what components need to be amended in order for the preferred alternative to be identified. So that could involve, should it be needed, an extension to term. But I think we need to find out the selected alternative, the required financing that happens around that, and then have a conversation. This is giving authority to have that conversation.
And as you understand it, what is the difference now between the original motion and your motion in terms of urgency? So the original motion seems to lend to, there's this urgent thing, we have to have clarity and the clarity has to happen now. And your motion has a vagueness of timing. And so how does that align with the urgency of meeting the requirement?
Mine still meets the urgency, because it's still linked with RISA. So that wording did not change. All that changed from the original motion, recommendation one, to this one was saying the preferred alternative. Timelines remain the same. The federal government has been clear that we need to meet this by 2027. And I also want to say, this isn't been sprung on us. This, this notion that this is a surprise, that's not true. We have known for some time here. So I think that everybody's been maybe dragging their heels. But I don't think it's fair to say that it's Ports or the federal government or us. I think everybody has not been sitting down, having those hard conversations. I'm hoping this will get that done, so we can get this across the finish line by 2027.
So your motion is just giving a bit more time to land somewhere with more...
No, this isn't about time. This is about the best option for the best city in the world.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Candelale. Councillor Candelale, three minutes.
Thank you. To Deputy Mayor McKelvey, through you, Madam Chair. Within your motion, if I understood correctly, there isn't any reference to amending the tripartite?
No, that's not true, there is. It says to, it says to negotiate and execute an amendment to the tripartite agreement that would allow for the preferred alternative.
Okay, thank you. And in addition to Councillor Chang's question, given the mayor's amendment, why don't you feel it goes far enough?
I don't feel the mayor's amendment goes far enough, because it's still option one. The mayor's amendment still is on option one. So it is denying the implementation of a sound barrier, of implementing sound mitigation, of implementing additional runway safety features that include measures that ensure that we don't have school buses and vehicles crossing a runway.
So despite the accommodation by the mayor's motion providing 2045 as part of the extension, you don't believe this accommodation is sufficient?
The accommodation isn't necessarily about the time, it's about which option. And again, I think we need to leave the door open for the best option. We are going in, or not as the federal government, rather, is going in to do construction. While they are in there, I think that they should, we should be open to additional safety measures being implemented at the same time. Should they identify that as necessary? Again, this is a federal project, it is federally regulated. And I think that we need to cede to that advice that they have on what measures should be implemented through this project.
So is your assessment that the, the mayor's motion is closing the door on option two and three in the next, in 25?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pasternak, questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Through you to the deputy mayor. I'm hunting for a motion that gives security of tenure, a long-term lease to protect this airport. Could you explain to us how your, your motion achieves that goal?
So my goal is saying that we, in principle, accept the preferred alternative of the environmental assessment, be that option one, option two, or option three. It gives authority to negotiate an amendment to the tripartite agreement to enable the implementation of that. That could include an extension of term if needed for amortization to ensure that you can pay for the project.
And, and based on that, what, what do you see as the bumps on the road through that process? It, it, it has secured us in some ways.
It is giving the authority to go out and have that conversation. I think that it is time for us to sit down with Ports Toronto once they identify the environmental assessment and the federal government to ensure that we are implementing the best option for the best city in the world and an amazing asset, an amazing airport right in the centre of downtown Toronto.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Right. Now, councillor, oh, councillor Cole, you just put your name up there? Gosh. When people stick their name on at the last second, you know?
You almost got councillor Pruce answering your questions there.
I don't know, I don't know. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the question is this. Who decided that you needed to do something about the buses crossing the runway?
So with the environmental assessment, Ports Toronto is looking at many aspects of safety and that's one of them.
I don't know, but who said that there had to be something done about the, where did this come from?
Nobody's saying that. That's one of the options before us, is the ability to correct that.
So nobody's saying you have to put in these, this new road to allow...
The federal requirement is to meet RISA. Ports Toronto is going beyond to improve safety for all and to ensure that there's additional sound mitigation and other things that benefit all of us.
Yeah, so Ports Toronto is saying you need this sound wall?
Not yet. They're, they're considering it. It is a consideration in the environmental assessment.
So who's telling us that you need to basically get the wall done? Get the new road done to get the school bus? Who's saying that?
Nobody is.
Yeah.
But what we are saying is, what my motion says is to look at the preferred alternative identified through the environmental assessment, which takes into consideration a wide variety of things. A good EA looks at technical, social, environmental, and cost considerations.
Councillor Cole, Cole, please, please.
They have a timeline, I believe it's imminent.
Well, she's ragging the puck, I can ask a question.
My God.
It's not my first rodeo here, you know?
Okay, what, what happened over lunch, really?
But anyways, so how long would an EA take?
Well, Ports Toronto is very aware of their timeline to meet RISA. And I believe it's clear that those results are imminent. So I think we should look at that.
How long would this EA take?
Well, they have to implement...
Five, 10, 15 years?
No, they have to implement the runway extension by 2027.
Okay, we know that.
So the implementation timeline is very, very clear.
So we know that.
Yeah.
We know about extending the runway.
So we know the timeline. We know how long the EA will take, and we know that the results are imminent. So I'm not sure what we're disagreeing on.
We're disagreeing on the fact you're saying that we have to quickly put in that wall and do something about the buses.
I'm not saying quickly.
Okay. Good.
I am saying that we need to allow the latitude to approve the preferred alternative of the environmental assessment. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you. Counselor Pasternak to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, 10 years ago, we had a similar debate about Billy Bishop Airport, and it was regarding jets at the airport. And whenever you spoke to someone who was against jets at the airport, they would say, I'm against jets at the airport, but I think the airport should still operate. And there was this social understanding, the social contract, that if jets were not allowed at the airport, the airport would be, would continue basically for generations. And I see that agreement, this, this social contract that we had with people who were opposed to jets falling apart because there was a general understanding that we would be able to continue with the airport. You know, at the same time, I just want to reiterate, it's my understanding that when city staff present reports, they're supposed to present all their various options. We can go this way, we can go this way. Council has to decide which way they want to go. But, you know, I'm looking at this facilitator, and once again, the negativity, the anti-airport phraseology. Bullet point one, the current negative impact. Bullet point two, look at options other than an airport. Bullet point six, environmental concerns. Bullet point eight, viability and need for an Island Airport. Bullet point nine, commutative impact of construction. This is really, you know, not what I would consider, you know, a balanced view that we're looking for staff to give us. At the same time, it is my understanding, and I wasn't there, that when anyone stood up in the, in this last public meeting at the end of September and supported the airport, they were shouted down. Now, I don't know how aggressive the facilitator was in, in making sure there was a balanced approach to that, but clearly, it, it didn't seem like a very fair process. You know, people are crying for parks, and we love our parks. We have 1,600 parks across the city. We have the largest ravine system of any major urban area in the world. We have one of the largest freshwater, freshwater lake fronts of any major city. So to argue that we were potentially park deficient, and we have to close this airport for a park, does not make a lot of sense. I will read from you a letter that we received from the Toronto Civic Employees Union Local Our position is clear. The economic activity generated by Ports Toronto must be protected and nurtured. Local 416 members stand ready to support growth and adapt to changes that will secure our livelihoods and enhance the well-being of our community. This is from the local union that will lose its jobs if this airport closes. I also want to point out clarification on something that was said earlier about Orange. It was said earlier that Orange relies on the helicopters, and they can pretty well land everywhere. That's not quite true. They do have fixed wing aircraft that need an airport to land in downtown Toronto or on the Island Airport so they can get to hospitals quickly to save lives. And we are in the job of saving lives. When you look at the economic benefits of this, you're looking at over 2,000 people who work directly on-site and another 4,500 of wider jobs. You're looking at $2.1 billion in annual economic impact. The importance for us is to be a reliable investment partner. The city of Toronto must be able to say to the world that we are open for business, we're open for, for investment, and we're open for risk-taking. I've been to this airport several times, many times, and it's an absolute wonderful experience to be able to get from the core of the downtown. I've raced from City Hall many times to the airport, to get through the terminal and get onto your plane, and of course, be hosted in the air by the wonderful employees of Porter Air, and of course, Air Canada flies out of there as well. This is a cherished institution that keeps our city vital, that employs thousands of people, that creates economic benefits, that moves people in and out of our city in a safe and professional way. We must have security of supply, we must have security of tenure, and I'll be supporting Deputy Mayor McKelvey's motion in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pasternak. Our next speaker is Counselor John Burnside. One second, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, I'm very disappointed with this report. Unlike our provincial and federal counterparts, we rely on our staff to give us unbiased advice. We don't have huge staffs that we can actually do our own research. We rely solely on staff. I'm looking at the recommendation for option number one. There are four bullet points. Three of them talk about the same thing, about time. You know, the lowest risk scenario to achieving the mandated federal safety requirements. And, and it goes on. It's one point puffed up as three. The fourth point is about lower project cost. And as Counselor McKelvey, Deputy Mayor McKelvey mentioned, we're not even paying for the project costs. I would have thought our, our other considerations would have been more important, the ones that we're actually have a vested interest in, such as additional safety measures, noise reduction. I would have thought those would have been prominent, and we wouldn't wade into areas like financing that is solely up to the airport. If we chose option number two or three, that doesn't preclude the airport from going ahead with number one. And we all know they're going to do everything they can to ensure uninterrupted service. I believe this is terrible advice we've received. It feels more, and I'm actually speaking to staff here, including some on the front row, it feels more about politics than policy. Others will judge for themselves, but I hope that I never feel this way again about a staff report and staff recommendations that come forward.
Oh, that was, I was, I actually gave you an extra 15 seconds. You didn't even take it. But don't put it in your talk bank. All right.
For questions with the mayor, I'll, I'll save them for that. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Counselor Holliday.
Are you waiting? Okay. No problem. So we'll move on to you, Counselor Cole. Are you here and ready? Are you, are you ready? Thank you. There's candies here. Okay, I'm going to put Counselor Cole on now because Counselor Holliday, you're asking to go a bit later. Is that right? Okay. Counselor Cole, you are up. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just got something clarified. I assume this was a federally mandated EA, but it's actually an EA undertaken by the Port Authority on their own volition. So it's a much shorter EA process. Thanks God, thank God that this is going on. So I just wanted to clarify that with my questions of the deputy mayor. I, I just think that, coming from a point where I truly believe in the social, economic, cultural, let's say, branding value of the airport. It is a quirky airport. It is a unique airport. It's, by no means is it perfect like Pearson Airport is. Yeah. I know, that deserves a laugh. But anyways, but it's our airport with all its imperfections, with all, when we used to have to take that ferry across, now we have the tunnel underneath and, but it is part of what we are as a city. Like many things in this city, they are not, let's say, copied anywhere else. So, so it's got a lot of imperfections. But on the other hand, we're very fortunate to have such an economic driver in our downtown. And we're so fortunate that it's so accessible. You can actually, you see people walk to go to the airport as opposed to being stuck on gridlock, going to Pearson all the time. So I just want to find something that basically supports a commitment to the airport. And there is nobody that's saying we're, we don't want to continue to have this valuable asset provide the service. I think everybody in council thinks that the airport is a critical valued asset that we have in the city of Toronto, not only for its employment, but again, for bringing tourists in and for convenience of Canadians or Trontonians that want to travel. So it's there. So it's a reality, and it's, as I said, far from perfect. Just like the people who live on the island, they have their homes there. That's not a perfect place to have housing, but we, as a city council, say, yes, you can have the houses on the island forever. We signed a 99-year lease, so, so therefore, I support the mayor's motion because it basically says that you can essentially adhere to the federal requirement of making the runway safer. And that is the key thing, to undertake that first action. And the mayor's motion leaves the door open to direct dialogue between the Port Authority and the federal government in terms of looking at the tripartite agreement, looking at all the other recommended improvements. It says that's going to be part of a formal series of meetings that are going to follow from this debate here today. So therefore, in those discussions going forward, if it's agreed that we need that barrier, the sound barrier, we need to take the buses off the runway that sometimes cross the runway, that will be decided in that process. The rest of it, whether it's option two, three, whatever it is, this, this is really too complex and convoluted for us who are amateurs in trying to deal with operating airports to make a decision on. I don't have that expertise. So I would rather have key staff dealing face-to-face with the Port Authority in good faith and with the federal government to come up and do the right things down the road. The mayor's motion leaves the door open to that. So that's why I think this is a pragmatic, practical approach. So thank you very much. I'm finished.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Deputy Mayor, next speaker is Counselor Carroll. One second, please, Counselor.
Let's clear the crowd here.
You are up.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker. Apologies, Madam Deputy Speaker, first, for being downstairs on a course this morning. But I know that lots of questions were, were asked and answered. And, and what they, what they had the effect of doing for the community is helping the community to understand that anytime this chamber discusses the Island Airport, it's pretty much like that, that line of Joe Pesci's from JFK. The issue surrounding this little patch of the island is a mystery wrapped inside a riddle, and still, the whole darn thing is an enigma. Every time we discuss it, here's where we end up. Everyone's saying, what are we doing? What is this? I don't know. Ah. And, and here we are again. But it boils down to one simple thing that we discussed at length in, in executive. There's no argument about whether or not to extend the runways. If, if the, the runways are going to have some form of extension for even one more day, we have to, we have to accept the fact that they've been ordered to do that. That's, that's, that's a, that's a done deal. That all comes down to Flight 358, loathes many years ago, overshooting the runway at Pearson. So that has to happen. They asked us what option we want. We asked staff to evaluate and come back with an option. They came back with option one. That doesn't mean that the federal government can't complete their EA and say, we're going with option two anyway. But the reason you see a report before you and it says option one is because they asked us our opinion. So our staff wrote us an opinion, and it's before us, and we're adopting it. That's all. It's not that complicated. They just wanted our opinion. A whole bunch of things may happen after, things we won't have control over, but that's, that's that. What did we hear most profoundly in order to do that runway? What did we hear again and again from Ports Toronto? They need to be able to finance this giant piece of capital work. This is a big project. The city of Toronto, never in a million years would we say, we're going to blow our entire reserve to do this project that, you know, may even have overages, but we'll spend all our cash doing it. You will, of course, use some debt financing. So they need some more years to do it. Do they need 40? I would submit not. If I was taking out a loan right now, while, while rates are falling, haven't fallen much, but they are going to continue to fall for the next couple of years. So if I was financing now, would I take out a 40-year loan? No. No, I wouldn't. I'd do my level best to, to work out some kind of equation between what I have on reserve, what I know is coming to me every year in dividend, and then I would try and finance something that was in the range of eight to 12 years. So today, the mayor has given them what they've been asking for all along in her motion. She's giving them 20 years. 20 years in a high-interest environment, market-wise, to take out a loan. And sometimes, if you really want something hard enough, and you're, you fight for it and you struggle for it, sometimes you just get it, and then you have to recognize the win. You need that amount of time to do some financing. In this motion, you're getting that amount of time to do the financing. So if that really was what it's about, if that is actually what it was about, then we're done. We're actually done. If the other things, as you said at the beginning of this lobbying effort, and my goodness, what an energetic lobbying effort it has been, we've all talked to many, many lobbyists. And if it was really about what you said it was about at the beginning, financing, we're all done now. But if it's actually about all these other ancillary issues that you want to talk about for the next decade, we have now the next decade in which we can have those conversations. So take the win today, get the financing, make the runway safe, and the conversation will continue. Those are my comments, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Holliday to speak.
Speaker, if I ask the clerk to put my motion up, it's pretty simple.
Nothing is simple.
Can you hold my time? The gallery here is having some fun.
Have Counselor Holliday's motion. Okay.
Can I have my 20 seconds back? Speaker, I, it's, it's very straightforward. It's to extend the tripartite agreement timeframe for 40 years. And that was the suggestion from Ports Toronto in terms of what they need. I want to be really clear because there was an important question that was asked and answered. And I asked, and the answer from the city manager was, a change in the timeframe simply takes that element off the table for the negotiations that they need to do. Because I think there's a, a mutual recognition that additional work is needed to be done to continue to modernize and develop the tripartite agreement. This takes the financing element off. You know, the bill on what Counselor Carroll said, what I want is a win for the city of Toronto. Right now, we are a rudderless ship that is adrift. I asked, I asked, I asked the mayor what the vision was, and the answer I got back was, I don't know. And I understand, there's lots of questions and interesting conversations about what an airport would look like. But I would have thought the... But I would have thought the answer would be, yes, I'm excited. We should get as much action out of that airport and as much development support on this city as we can. I don't know how many flights it means or what kind of aircraft, but we'll figure that out. It should be everything that it can be for us. And the second half of that conversation should be, how can the city of Toronto help the airport with its objectives because their objectives are the same as ours? How do we roll out the red carpet? Instead, the recommendations forward are to limit the options. Never mind those options two and three and whatever community benefits they might produce or safety. One of them is to put in extra navigational aids. How could we possibly be opposed to that? And here we are narrowing it down and making it hard. And in my questions, the light bulb went on. There was a concern that if the costs of the improvements, the renovations, got really high, that suddenly that airport would be incited to increase business. Imagine that, increasing business, moving more people in and out of the city of Toronto, visitors and economic development. There's a fear that they're going to spend $200 million, and you know what? Somehow want to recoup that through the model. But you know what's obnoxious in all of this? Is that if it was to fail, then it's okay that Pearson Airport would have to suck up all that business. And you know why that matters to me? Because I'm a resident and I am the councillor that people trusted to elect, to send me down here to look after the interests of the people in the Tobago Centre who have not one, but two flight paths over the community. Look at the noise exposure forecast contours for this airport. They're over the water. That's where the noise is. Go look at the ones for Pearson Airport. They're over people's houses. You know, when I go out campaigning and knocking on doors at different points in the year, you got to be careful which day you go on in certain neighborhoods because you can't have the conversation because of the flights overhead. Ask the people how they feel about sleep and increases to night budget. So how can we say it's not okay to have the noise and the flights in this part of the city, but it's okay to stuff them over there? And don't think it's just an Tobago issue. Tobago South, Tobago North, there's councillor Croissante, you know. But those same complaints, because I spent time on the committee, come from Parkdale, they come from North Toronto, they come from North York, they come from York, madam speaker. And the people in the entire west end of the city tolerate all of the noise from that aircraft because they understand how important airports are to the vitality of the city. Why can't we have the same vision about the airport in the city of Toronto? Why do we have to be a rudderless ship? The entire business world is looking at us, and this council has nothing to show about the future. Well, my motion says, darn right, we want that airport there for another 40 years. I can't say what it's going to look like, but I'm committed to it. I want it to continue to exist because I know it's important. It's important to the citizens, the businesses, the employees, and all the people that trusted us because they made a decision to invest in our city. Think carefully on this. This is about the city's future. It's about treating all of our neighborhoods fairly.
Thank you. Councillor Bradford.
Thanks, madam speaker. I have a motion here, and this motion asks very clearly for council to affirm the city's commitment to the future of the Billy Bishop Airport, supporting the lease extension and the renegotiation of the tripartite agreement which was struck in 1983 before I was born. This is a very simple vote for you. If your vision for the city of Toronto includes a long-term city center airport, if you support the airport and its contributions to our economy, its contributions to our workforce, many of the people who are in the room here today, and its contributions to connectivity to Toronto and the rest of the country and the rest of the world, then you should be crystal clear about that. No need to play games. Put your money where your mouth is, put your X down and support this motion. Let's go on the record together as a council. Let's take a serious position to help advance these conversations and move the airport discussion forward. Let's do what we have to do. We've had plenty of time to work on this, and I think that's why it's a little bit frustrating. I heard a comment earlier today that this was just sort of like dropped in our laps. There was a letter that was submitted of December 2023 to our city manager, Paul Johnson, to Mayor Olivia Chow from Ports Toronto, saying, we need to start this process. We need to get going on this. We want to come in, we want to work with you, we want to advance this conversation, not just about the runway extension, but about the enabling terms and circumstances that will make that financially viable and give the operations of the airport a sustainable pathway forward. And yet, the flag that was planted by Ports Toronto and their correspondence to this council, to all of us today, indicates very clearly that without the term extension and without the renegotiation of the tripartite agreement, which dictates the terms of the operations of that airport, quote, "The future of Billy Bishop Toronto City Airport is at risk." How do I interpret that? It means it's not a sure thing. So council's screwing around with something that generates billions of dollars of GDP for our economy, employs 5,000 people, is the ninth busiest airport in the country. This council is screwing around, parsing out the language, and afraid to take the grown-up position, do the right thing to advance these negotiations, and it's disgraceful. And it's got to stop. Now, Mayor Chow's motion, I got it here, it might address, might appear to address that concern, but in reality, it's a Trojan horse. And I'll tell you why. It is meant to shut off any conversation about getting a tripartite agreement that meets the city's needs today. It specifies and in fact locks in the 1983 tripartite agreement. Mayor pretends that all we need to do is give a few more years on the existing lease and that all of this is going to be fine for 12 years for Ports to be able to finance the runway for RISA. But then it tries to shut down any renegotiation of the tripartite agreement. Again, 1983. I don't know how many of you have read it, probably not that many, but I could tell you, if you open that document up, it has a lot of writers and specificity that is problematic in the world of 2024. It specifies the specific type of aircraft that are allowed to fly out of that airport by make and model. So you take the Dash 8 Q400, that plane's not even being manufactured anymore. It's like if I went up to you and said, you got to drive a Datsun. I said, well, what about an Nissan? Because Datsun's not available anymore. This tripartite agreement specifies the specific make and model of aircraft that are not even being manufactured. If we don't update and renegotiate that agreement, then once those aircraft stop working, how are we going to operate flights out of that airport? So these are some of the details that exist within that tripartite agreement. And simply by taking the mayor's motion as it is written today, it locks us into that until 2045, with the language being existing tripartite agreement. And I think that's really problematic because it doesn't provide a viable pathway for the airport and continuity of operations going forward. My motion complements deputy mayor McKelvey's motion, which I think is very thoughtful and helpful, directing the staff to come back in Q1 of next year with a process for public consultation and next steps needed to update that tripartite agreement. I get the impression that the mayor is not comfortable with that, but city council should take the grown-up position and stand that we recognize that it's a necessary enabling factor to ensure the long-term viability of this economic engine, this city center airport that is valued by so many Torontonians.
Thank you.
Thanks, madam speaker.
Councillor Fletcher to speak.
Thank you, thank you very much, speaker. I have to say that I'm also tired of the games. And I'm also tired of being in a perennial mayoral debate in this chamber. Sick and tired of it, actually. And I will agree with you, councillor Carroll. I've not seen a lobbying effort like this for a long time. You and I, councillor Thompson, have been here for a while. This is a full court press with all of the information, just dumped so much information dumped on us at every second. We're hurting the long-term options for the airport. Mayor Chow has a motion that says, okay, here's another couple of decades to get everything right. It's as if there's some kind of sneaky motion there. Pick up, look under the rug, and it's a secret motion to close the airport. It's a secret motion, everybody. Maybe it's written in secret ink. I don't know. But it's not there. You talk about growing up, grow up. It's not there. There's three options, safety options, that we're told with best advice from the city. Here you go. You can get one done quickly, within three years. And by questioning, there is not even a detailed design. Look at all the developments in your ward. Without a detailed design, how far along are they? They're nowhere. A schematic Class D assessment, that's, here's our idea, here's what we think it might cost. Grow up. We all know about development in this place. You've been lobbied. Let's agree to that. Grow up and admit it. Grow up and admit it. It's the waterfront. Do you make decisions like that on the waterfront? You want a mega mall? You want a Ferris wheel? You want a mini rail? Do you want that? That was the last time we did this on the waterfront. We had to stop it. Stop it. It's the central waterfront. It's a very delicate place. It's delicate because you've got a lot going on. You've got 50, 60,000 new homes coming in. How high can they be? What can happen? Do you not care about that? Or you've just been lobbied, so you're not going to care about that? We have the inner harbor. We've got a place where people, everybody wants to go to the island. This is right by the island. We're getting new ferries. They have to be safe. We have Transport Canada. It's not an easy thing. Maybe if you're sitting, councillor Croissante, up in your ward, you've got an airport. I'm not expecting to have the whole city stop because your airport wants to expand its runway. So I just think, let's stop and look at what really is in front of us. Are we giving assurance? Yes. We're not closing the airport. Here, we're giving you more time. We're not closing the airport. We know option one will be the one that will work because we also have to worry about safety in our harbor, safety in our waterfront, safety in our neighborhoods. If there was something, safety in another airport here that was going to be compromised, should we just forget about it because we've been lobbied so well and because we're always in a mayoral debate in this council chambers? Is that what should happen? I don't think so. So in talking to one of my friends from Ports Toronto, they said, okay, well, yes, option one, but we need money. We need money. Well, here's the runway for money. You're getting the runway for money. You're getting enough time to get all the money you need in order to do what you need. And to continue the conversation, which councillor Bradford may have started before you were born, but there's been a long discussion about the waterfront, including from your ward, from my ward, from downtown, from Mimical, everybody's talking about the waterfront. So, pardon?
Scarborough.
Scarborough, yes. It's not like we're saying, let's build out a groin 50 feet, 100 meters into the lake and make the decision now. This is a thoughtful process. I think everybody should be happy we're getting to a space and a place that's actually going to meet everybody's needs. And I'm sorry if that doesn't feel like it, but I think it actually does.
Thank you. Councillor Perks to speak.
Thank you, speaker. You know, some people, no matter how hard you try, you can't make them happy. Like, you can give them sugary treats, you can let them watch their favorite shows on Netflix, tell them they don't have a curfew, you can do anything you want, and they just can't make them happy. Here's what's happened. The federal government said airplanes need extra runway so they don't run off the end of the runway. And because Billy Bishop is an airport, they have to deal with that. And they passed a regulation saying, you've got to make sure that airplanes don't run off the runway. That's what we're doing here, responding to a federal regulatory request. So the city of Toronto looked at that question and had conversations with the public and had conversations with the port authority, and, you know, we all thought about it a lot. And the staff came back and said, you know, this is the option that gets it done with the least, bringing in the least other baggage, and is probably the easiest to finance. City council, why don't you do that? Well, then the port authority went in the press and said, oh, no, oh, no, we need to extend, we need to extend the whole agreement, open the whole thing up for 40 years, and give us the flexibility to do all kinds of other things. And we said, whoa, that sounds like a bit much, right? And then we all debated it at executive committee, and people wrote opinion columns and got on Twitter and do all the things that happened. And then the mayor of Toronto said, okay, if your concern is you need more than just the next nine years to pay this off, we'll give you the room. Right? Here is the path for you to meet the federal regulatory requirement. Done and dusted. But then, we start getting all kinds of other motions like, wait a minute, city council has to agree that this is going to be an airport, and we're going to renegotiate all the terms of what an airport is, and we need to decide that today with no studies, no information, no conversation, no nothing. And then the penny drops. The penny drops. The people who have been pressuring us, telling us, you know, you've got to build roads and you got to build walls and you got to renegotiate the whole thing, and who told us when we were doing Villiers Island, the flight path? And when we were doing the Island Master Plan, the flight path? There, this has never, for those voices, been about meeting the federal regulatory requirement. It's never been about the safety of people flying into Billy Bishop Airport. It's always been about expanding the permissions for the airport and forcing Toronto city council to guess what the future is going to be like 40 years from now with no information. And it's quite hilarious, the level of, well, I want to say the word hypocrisy, but it's not quite that. It's, I can make an, I can make an argument, but you can't. The level of that going on is really quite striking. Councillor Bradford gets up and says, did you know that the current agreement was signed like almost 40 years ago? That's terrible. No wonder, like, we have to modernize it for another 40 years. Because the people in 1989 didn't know everything about what was going to be happening in 2025, the people in 2025 should give permission for what it's going to look like until 2075. I challenge anyone in this room, anyone in this room, to give me a coherent explanation of what travel patterns on Earth are going to be like in 2075. How much air travel will take place? What climate mitigation measures will have come in? Will people, will economies be changing because the climate has changed? Are hurricanes going to start getting in the way of flights? Will we have built a better connection to Pearson? Will the economy be the same? You know, 40 years ago, in the city of Toronto, we were mostly manufacturing stuff in what we call our employment lands. What are we going to be doing 40 years from now? Nobody knows the answers to these questions, but councillor Bradford and others in this debate
Five seconds.
have been trying to lock us in for that 40-year period. It's never been about safety for them, and it's exhausting to listen to.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Malick to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As a city, safety has to be our highest priority. And I have a motion that I'd like to put forward that is committed to putting safety clearly in the picture. Is the motion coming up? And that, my motion, as you can see, it amends councillor Bradford's motion to ensure that safety and our responsibility as a city and a city council is in the picture as we have this debate and as we've engaged in this chamber today around what is in front of us. Safety is the highest priority. It's a highest priority for everyone who uses the airport, everyone who has joined us today and works there, everyone who is in the neighborhood of our waterfront and in the neighborhood of our airport, and everyone who uses it. And we have talked a lot about the users of this airport, and we have to make sure that the safety obligation is about them as well. is about them as well. And this is not just safety in a loose and general way. We have a serious deadline in front of us, July 12, 2027, set out by Transport Canada, making sure that the Island Airport meets its safety obligations under the runway and the safety areas regulation. And we must make this safety obligation a priority for the operations of the airport. And as one of the signatories to the tripartite agreement and a landholder on the Island Airport lands, we cannot get in the way of the deadline, and we can't get in the way of the current operations. And meeting these obligations, I will repeat again, is about the continued operations of this airport. And option one in front of us delivers the essential safety requirements with the least risk in the most efficient way and the most cost-effective way. And I have never heard us in this chamber say that that has ever been an issue or a bad thing for us to agree on as a council. We need to make sure that we are moving forward with this responsible option in order to enable Ports Toronto to meet its deadline and to continue the operations that we see right now. It avoids the time and the potential delay that comes with an official plan amendment to consider the proposed works beyond the safety requirement. It's also the option that we have heard that Torontonian support. You have heard from Ports Toronto, absolutely, and you've also heard from your neighborhood associations. And you've heard from those who value the queer space, Friends of Handlands, that is right across from the airport. You have heard from people invested in the environmental and the sustainable future of our city. And you have heard from people who are invested in the city's interests when it comes to the revitalization of our waterfront. And as a city, we are obligated to also take on those views and that important outlook to the future as seriously as we possibly can. And we know how important the tripartite agreement is. We know 2033 has been, you know, at our doorstep. And the tripartite agreement does have to be revisited in a thoughtful and thorough way. And that needs to be done through a process that we can all see and is made visible. Considerations that we have heard and we know are so important to the airport now, right now, not 40 years ago, but the one that we have right now and into the future, needs to make sure that we consider the environment, air quality and health, economic development and housing among those issues that we have to be taking seriously and demonstrating that we are. And for me, a democratic and transparent process about how we look at that thoroughly and visibly and with community engagement and allow for the research for the best outcomes is the high priority that we have to be looking at alongside this safety. And considering an extension ahead of this is not ideal. And I believe the mayor's proposal is responsible to ensure Ports can secure financing for up to 20 years, as has been done with the tunnel. We have an example of how this is possible with the review of a business case with the eyes on it from our chief financial officer. We need to set the process of reviewing the tripartite agreement for the long term to set it up for success, for the success of every party that's a signatory, and for us as a city in our interest, to demonstrate that it follows a logical progression and to give it the time it requires for the best outcome that we can get. And to ensure the city is working in the best interests of all our stakeholders, residents, community associations,
Five seconds.
and waterfront revitalization. Safety can't wait. We have to move forward in fulfilling the safety obligation and to do it as quickly as possible. And we have to plan for the long term to continue to make decisions as responsibly as possible. Every single Torontonian in every part of our city deserves that from us. Thank you very much.
For you, councillor Holiday, three minutes clarification of the motion.
Thank you, Speaker. Deputy Mayor, there's two elements to what you've proposed. The first is a condition, and the second is temporal timeframe. So the condition is that the RISA's are completed, or the RISA, RISA's. I just wondered, is there any probability in this world that this is not going to be done? And I mean, let's say today the whole thing falls apart and council objection obstructs this. Is it most likely that, you know, the feds or whoever has to do this would just overrule us? Is there any possibility that those extensions are not going to be completed?
Councillor Holiday, thank you for your question. For me, moving this amendment forward was to make sure that when we talk about the long-term viability of the airport, our commitment as a city to be part of a negotiated process with Ports Toronto and Transport Canada is not at the exclusion of the safety obligations that have brought us this debate in the first place. And for me, adding this here is about ensuring that, first of all, we are meeting the safety obligations and that, as a city, we are enabling that in the way that we see as the most responsible in meeting the timeline, and that that work has to be a priority as we talk about what the future of the airport operations will be.
So is it our job to enforce or put pressure on the timeline? Because like, I thought the regulations were absolute, like, change the runways or don't fly.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Well, you mentioned that, you know, this was about meeting timelines.
It's meeting a safety obligation, that's what I said.
So, you know, regardless of how we feel or what we say in this council, does the objective not still remain because it's external to us? That airport needs to change its runways or they don't fly on it. Is that not correct? Like, is there, is there, am I misunderstanding that somehow we have cards in all of this? Like, we, they're asking us to agree to something, but if we don't agree or block it, either someone's going to step in or they just don't fly.
So the debate that we have in front of us is about the city supporting and enabling the meeting of a federal safety obligation.
Okay.
And that does require our participation as a signatory to the tripartite agreement. And Transport Canada has been very clear about the timeframe that we need to meet. And the commitment here and with the recommendations in front of us and with the mayor's amendment is that we meet that safety obligation within the timeframe with an option that allows us to get there within that timeframe. And the amendment responds to what I've heard from my colleagues and from community members that safety is a high priority for us. And I wanted to make sure that that is in the picture as we move forward and that, you know, as councillor Bradford put it to us, you know, in terms of our commitment to the airport, that right now, what has brought us here is our safety obligation. And I wanted to make sure that that has been very clear.
So it's about agreeing to something later and not today?
I'm just not, I'm just not sure I'm understanding.
No, but there's two conditions, right? The first condition is whether something happens.
Sorry, that was your last question. Sorry, you're way over three minutes. Thank you. Councillor Bradford, three minutes.
Thanks, Madam Speaker, and thanks for the proposed amendment. On what basis do you think that public consultations and the city asserting its position as a council cannot happen concurrently with Ports Toronto doing the construction to meet the RISA requirements?
I'm sorry, this is on, sorry, can you just repeat the question?
Yep.
Yeah.
Why can we not take this position as a council today to demonstrate that commitment and provide certainty to the different stakeholders who are involved while also moving forward with our RISA obligations from the federal government? Your motion suggests that we can't provide that level of certainty and commitment as a council until after we've done RISA. Why can't we do them both at the same time?
So for me, and I think what has been very clear is that we are moving forward and what has been the substance of our debate is how we, as a council, support the fulfillment of a federal safety obligation to first and foremost ensure that everyone who uses comes through the airport and, you know, right across the city can count on the safety of that airport. And there has been a very clear deadline from Transport Canada of mid-2027. And I'm not interested in any delay for that deadline to be met. And we're not going to stand in the way of that. And if that obligation is not met, then the future operations of the airport.
But that's not our jurisdiction because if those obligations are not met, the airport shuts down. We lose our license from the federal transportation.
And my commitment is that those operations do continue. And that is what is in front of us.
So the question, just to be clear, so we all understand, why can City Council not assert a position in the affirmation today, direct our city manager to take that position in the ongoing discussions with Ports Toronto and the federal government right now, while also simultaneously advancing our federal obligations under RISA? It would seem to me that those are completely congruent. They can happen concurrently.
What I wanted to make sure that we put in the picture is that today's debate is about job number one, which is for the fulfillment of a federal safety obligation on a timeframe that is, that will not budge and that is very, very clear. And to ensure that as we are moving forward in our choices and our decisions, the meeting of that safety obligation is priority number one.
So let me ask you a question, because I appreciate that, and safety is very important. Would you accept an amendment, then, to include implementation of the RISA as well as these other positions? So council takes a, takes a position that we want to implement RISA in addition to lease extension, renegotiating the tripartite, and directing our city manager to take that position in those discussions with Transport Canada and Ports Toronto? Would you amend that?
That was your last question.
I'd like to proceed with my amendment as it stands.
After the next election.
Councillor Burnside, three minutes clarification of the motion.
Thank you, through you. So if I understand correctly, the impetus for your amendment was to ensure, I think you just said that the timeline doesn't budge in terms of the safety additions to the runway.
The item that we have in front of us is about the runway and safety area. This very important and critical and unmovable federal safety obligation by Transport Canada. And in our considerations, I wanted to make sure that we are prioritizing that. We are clear that it is job number one. And to be very clear that the fulfillment of it is about the future operations of the airport and that, as a city, that is how we are approaching this, to fulfill those obligations in order for it to operate in a way that is safe as the requirements come in in mid-2027 for us.
Right, but I thought if we approved option number one today, what we've been told is that our job is kind of done in terms of what we need to do in terms of for the airport to get on with fulfilling its obligations. So would it not make sense to then move on? Like, I'm not sure what more we can do between now and whatever that date is in 2027 and why you want to wait until that date when you just mentioned that the federal government dictates the timeline. We're voting on it, option number one, today anyway. So our job is kind, as a council, is done. Is there more that city staff need to do? I thought the whole idea of option number one is that it expedites everything and the city staff don't have to do anything. So I'm not sure the purpose of this.
Well, the way that you've laid it out, councillor Burnside, I really do appreciate that. Because as I've put forward the amendment, then it seems like we're both agreeable to it. If today we are fulfilling our obligations around a federal safety requirement and affirming what has been laid out in councillor Bradford's motion, this amendment should be a welcome one for us to be able to demonstrate how through our choices today we have put safety as the number one priority and also been very clear about how we will engage on the future operations of the airport in a logical progression.
But I'm still confused as why we're then waiting till the completion of those safety enhancements. Like, I'm not sure what includes us from actually getting on with the agreement. Now that we've made the decision on part one, why we have to wait to start part two? I mean, I know it is government, so I know we do like to kind of take as long as we can, but I'm just a little confused. And that'll be my last question.
And I've been very clear about what my intention is with this amendment. It's to make sure that we are staying focused on what job number one is in front of us today alongside the affirmation and the commitment that is being looked for.
Last speaker, councillor Candevale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few remarks, comments on this debate. And it is a debate. And I know there were earlier comments characterizing it as a mayoral debate. I think that perhaps maybe unhealthy that we need to preserve a culture of debate. That is our role, that is our focus of work here. We are, as councillors, have to weigh the perennial issues of ward and city. We broker interests. And to characterize it as the fruit of lobbying, I think is also very unhealthy. That argument could be extended to every issue before us, whether it's lobbying from any interest group or institution that exists. So I think we've got to remind ourselves that debate is very pertinent and healthy to our culture and democracy. A few questions, a few comments that I think are at the heart of much, of many of the public. Certainly, I've heard this from my community, both in my ward but across Scarborough and across the city. There is a lot of minutia, there's a lot of technical detail before us that I imagine some of us are not completely familiar with, much less the public. And the question before many in the public, and I know in my community, is that is this taking our city towards a more healthier economic place? We've seen the articles, we've seen the headlines showing Canada and our city's productivity problem. There's a big question before us that many in our communities are looking at. We've got an airport that has been operating very responsibly, very well. The accessibility has been a boon for many of us in the East End and Scarborough. If you've ever had to travel the 401 right now, it is a disaster. It is inaccessible for many. So this conversation that we're having and the decision before us is really, in part, a question of growing accessibility, whether it's for residents, we're looking to go beyond our city, and of course, for those coming to invest, to do business and visit our city as tourists. So I think that's part of the optics of what is before us. And with that, I'll leave my comments to, that this is a larger question of perception and how we support our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's ring the bells for a vote. Okay. If we can put the first motion on the screen. Motion 1A by Mayor Chow. On favor, recorded vote. I was hoping that nobody would pick that up.
Motion 1A carries. The vote is 17 to 8.
Okay. Next motion, 1B by Mayor Chow. Okay, there it is on the screen, recorded vote. Those bells are really annoying, aren't they? No, I don't, it's just ding dong, ding dong.
Councillor Crisanti, could we have your vote, please? Motion 1B carries, the vote is sixteen to nine.
Okay. So, uh, 2A and 2B by Councillor McElvee is redundant. Uh, motion three by Councillor Holliday is redundant.
Sorry, just, we didn't vote on number one as amended, though.
Pardon?
Do we need to vote on, on one as amended?
At the end. Yeah.
So we voted on the amendment, but it doesn't mean that, does that mean that it... But that means you're adopting all of it, then? Okay.
Okay, so our next motion would be, uh, okay. No, I know, I'm just waiting, the clerk said, wait a minute. Okay. Okay, Councillor Bradford, we're in the middle of a vote.
Well, I'll ask for the clerk's ruling on it.
Just, just give us a minute, please. Yeah. So, we always vote on the item as amended after we move all the amendments. Okay, well, we haven't gone there yet. So, we have Deputy Mayor Malik's motion next, which is motion number five. Amending, motion number four. So it's before us, so... I just said it. Councillor, Councillor McElvee's motion A, Councillor McElvee's motion B, and Councillor Holliday's motion is redundant. Right now, we're voting on Deputy Mayor Malik's amendment, which is motion number five. It's on the screen. Okay, recorded vote. We should have the copies of the motion at the back, like we always used to have it. Well, it helps.
Motion five carries, the result is sixteen to nine.
Okay, um, I, hold on, we're in the middle of a vote. On Councillor Bradford's motion for as amended, recorded vote. Yes, as amended. Okay, we just, we just approved the amendment by the deputy mayor, so now we're voting on the motion as amended.
Motion for as amended carries, the result is fourteen to eleven.
Okay, so, item as amended, recorded vote. Point of order, Councillor Holliday?
Clerk, I want to be really clear, because I get a chance to ask, because of all the shouting. You ruled, you ruled my motion out of order, you said it was redundant. And I would like to raise the point that my motion is different from that, uh, that was placed. The, the one that was placed was to negotiate and enter, mine was an explicit direction to staff to immediately make a change. And I, I'd like to have your ruling and clarification as to whether or not the two motions are indeed redundant because they are explicitly different.
Okay, get the clerk to respond. We'll give a reason for it. So, Councillor Holliday, your motion is to, uh, to, for an extension for up, if I can have everybody here listen to me, so we don't have to ask the same question again? Councillor Fletcher?
No, sorry.
Councillor Holliday's motion is, uh, is for a time extension of up to 2073. So the mayor's motion that was adopted is, um, no later than December 31st, 2045. So that's why Councillor Holliday's motion is redundant. All right? So now we have, now we have item as amended, so we're voting on everything as amended, recorded vote.
Councillor Pruta, may we have your vote, please? Councillor Crisanti, may we have your vote, please? The item as amended carries, the vote is seventeen to eight.
Okay, so we finished the first item. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge a former MP in the council chambers, John Nunziata. He's been a while since he's been here. Okay, so, uh, our next, um, item is this, oh, you, um, do we have any quick releases? Let's try to do some quick releases. Okay, quick release, Councillor Moise.
All right, Madam Speaker, EC 14.11.
Okay, just a sec.
I have a supplementary report, the...
Hold, hold on, let me find it. Oh, deferred item, EC 4, yes?
There's a, I want to move a supplementary port in that item.
Okay, you're releasing it?
Yep.
Okay, on favor, the amendment's on, it's on the screen, amendment on favor, show fans.
No, just releasing.
Carried.
Uh, T 16.4.
Okay, hold on, there's a lot of noise in here. What's the next item?
T 16.4.
E...
I have a, I have a motion, an amendment, sorry.
Okay, can we put the motion on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to, I think we need to, there's a lot of noise in here, let's just have a five-minute break. Okay.
Are we move... This is the heritage.
Pardon?
It's heritage, this is heritage, I believe.
No, but it's here without a recommendation.
I think this item actually has a, this is the heritage item for this motion. Yes, just to move it.
Yeah, so 214, 230 Sherburne. It's here without a recommendation. So what are you recommending?
Well, staff's rec, there's.
You're recommending, you're moving staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, on staff recommendation, on favor, show of hands, post if any carried.
And HL 16.9.
Pardon?
HL 16.9. I moved the supplementary report in that item.
HL. HL, critical need for universal student nutrition. It's here without a recommendation.
Just move the supplementary report.
Move the staff report?
Yeah.
On favor, carried.
I do have one more item, but can I speak to it or not? Okay. 16.5, TE 16.5, 214, 230 Sherburne Street.
IBS, it's here without a recommendation.
I do have a motion on this item, amendment on this item.
You have a motion on that?
Yep, there's amendment on this item.
Are you moving the staff report?
I'm moving the amendment. There is amendment on that item.
It's here without a recommendation.
I'll continue to hold it.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. GG 16.12, the GFL Environmental Curbside Collection Services. I'd like to refer it back to general government for the November 20, 2024 meeting.
GG 16.12, you're deferring it?
Referring it back.
Okay, to the, to the next committee meeting. Okay, councillor Ainsley is recommending GG 16.12, which is the GFL environment, environmental for curbside collection, referring it back to the next general government meeting. Recorded vote.
Councillor Coleman, may we have your vote, please? Councillor Coleman, may we have your vote verbally, please? In the affirmative, thank you. Councillor Crissanti, in the affirmative, thank you. The referral motion carries. The vote is twenty-three to two.
Okay. Councillor Crissanti, quick release.
Yes, Speaker, thank you. So, Speaker, I'm going to be releasing EX 17.14, City of Toronto Reserve and Reserve Fund Balances.
Okay, hold on. What was that number again?
EX 17.14. City of Toronto Reserve and Reserve Fund Balance.
Releasing it?
Yes, Speaker.
Okay, EX 17.14, City of Toronto Reserve and Reserve Fund Balances. Councillor Crissanti is releasing it. On favor, show of hands, carried. I had two votes there.
That's good enough.
Okay. Councillor Morley.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm holding item EY 16.11. I just have a small amendment on construction staging for this item. Staff have the, have the language?
Fifty-two oh seven Dundas?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's just to have city council direct the applicant to install temporary zebra crosswalk at the compulsory stop control for eastbound traffic at the intersection of St Albans Road and Adobico Pathway.
Okay, there it is on the screen by councillor Morley. The amendment on favor, carried. Item as amended, on favor, carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sax.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I held three items, TE 16.29, 16.30, and 16.31. The clerk has a, should have a motion on each one? Not ready? Okay, do it tomorrow. Thank you.
Councillor Fletcher?
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. And this is on EX 17.4, which is the redesigning the vacant home tax program, supporting housing supply. I just have a quick motion for a quick release, please. It's the one I tried to move and you ruled out of order months ago. Who says it's not quick? Oh, it's not quick?
No, but isn't this the, this not quick? You want to release EX 17.4, the vacant home tax?
Yes, but councillor Holliday says it's not quick.
Okay, that's fine.
So I'll keep my hold.
Sure.
And then I have one, if it's ready, GG 16.3 on the pilts. But I'm not sure if it's ready over there, clerk.
So GG 16.3 is status of outstanding payments in lieu of tax amounts?
I sent an email, I sent that over. No, it's not ready yet.
It's not ready.
I'll do that tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Moyes.
Okay, let's try again, Madam Speaker. For item TE 16.5, there's, there is a motion, the staff has it. Motion A and B. There we go. That's right.
Okay.
Yes, this is staff recommendation.
Okay, so it's on the screen, on favor, carried. But then the second motion on TE 16.13, that's the same item?
Yeah, but there's a B portion of it.
Pardon? Oh, you have a second motion on this one?
Yep.
It's on the screen. On favor, carried. Item as amended, on favor, carried. Did you want to do the heritage one?
We did it already.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that's it for the quick releases. Okay. Councillor Fletcher, you ready to deal with EX 17.3, electric ferries? So the next timed item that we did by councillor McAlvy, you asked that after the mayor's first key item, we deal with infrastructure environment, IE 16.2, enhancing capital infrastructure with IE 16.4 congestion management plan. So we're going to be at that item now.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, because that was, I didn't realize it was a timed item after the mayor's first item. Sorry. Okay, do we have any questions on that? Councillor Bradford, you held the IE 16.2. Do you have any questions on that item?
No, I just got a motion that I've pre-circulated that I'll move. But they're packaged together, right? Yeah, so I, I got nothing.
Okay, do we have any questions at all? No. How about an IE 16.4? Do we have questions on that one? Councillor Pasternak, you held the item down? Councillor Pasternak? IE 16.4, councillor Pasternak, congestion management plan. Do you have any questions? Or does anybody have any questions on the item? Put your name on the screen, please. Councillor Pasternak, questions? Put your name on the screen, please. Councillor Pasternak, questions? Are you ready?
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm sorry for the delay. Now, I brought this up in committee. Over the years, the main complaints that we have had at our office when it comes to traffic congestion is in and around construction zones where they block off active lanes with no work taking place. They abandon construction sites with lanes blocked off for weeks on end. And they use live lanes as private parking spots. I'm just wondering, I don't really see how this plan addresses those key issues.
Through the speaker. So, we've also observed similar sort of concerns with respect to people sort of abusing access to the right-of-way. And this is why with respect to the new congestion levies that we're introducing, as well as the street occupation fees and all these other measures that are being put into effect, to basically essentially disincentivize them from those sort of practices. Because essentially, the cost that we incur to traffic management when they're taking up the right-of-way unnecessarily, we want to basically pass that on to them. And in doing so, again, when you look at the cost that we're going to be proposing, which is coming forward in the budget, it will serve as a disincentive against that sort of behavior.
So we've moved, I've moved a couple of few motions over the years, January 2020, July 2022, and October of 2023. I have a motion coming to revisit those motions and to incorporate it into future iterations of our traffic management plan. Would you be supportive of self-financing enforcement strategy where there's a complaint system, where we number each site, there's a complaint system, and if those orange pylons are up all weekend long, blocking traffic with no workers, no equipment, no digging, that we can have a system where we enforce them to remove it, or we fine them, or some kind of consequence for that?
Yep, through the speaker. So thanks for that, Councillor Pasternak. We're happy to take another look at those. Certainly, our Transportation Standards Officers, as I think you might know, we've had a bit of a deficit in sort of the boots on the ground to be out there and examining those work zones. Jennifer and ECS also has inspection resources that can help to support that on city projects. So I think that's the intention, the mechanism that you described in your motions. We're happy to take another look at that.
All right, so I have a motion coming where we're going to revisit those. Next set of questions is for the city manager. I don't think it's any secret that we've had, according to police services, over 1,000 protests in the city since October 7th. I don't think I have to describe what the geopolitical issues are. Many of these have taken place through main arterial roads, blocking traffic, ambulance, fire services, pedestrians. Now, I'm looking at our bylaws. What actions can we take to ensure that protests and rallies are safe, but allows our vehicles and pedestrians to get around the city? I don't see any indication that any of our bylaws in this regard have been enforced.
Through the speaker. You know, we have to take a risk-based approach on these protests is the first step on that. So the fact we may have bylaws in place that we can exercise, it's always about a risk-based approach to that. I've asked some of my colleagues to be able to answer specifically what we may be able to do in that, but I come back to, we would be relying on intelligence and a emergency management conversation that we have on all of these protests about whether, and when, and how action should be taken either by ourselves or the police services. Not sure if legal wants to add anything more to that answer.
So I'm advised that our bylaws aren't currently set up this way, but it's something that could be taken back and looked at.
Yeah, Councillor Pasternak, what we have before is congestion management plan. We're not talking about protest.
But, Madam Speaker, hundreds of rallies blocking traffic is part of our problem.
No, I understand, but this report doesn't cover that.
Well, I mean, this has... This has frozen traffic in the downtown every weekend from mobs that have taken to our streets.
Speaker, you've made a ruling. That's not something that we debate. If the member knows what his options are if he doesn't like your rule.
Okay, let's just keep on the topic that we have. Councillor Deputy Mayor Malik, question. There you go.
Thank you. As we're moving towards enhancing the capital coordination, can you share some of the lessons that have been learned about working with other divisions and agencies from the experience on Spadina earlier this year? Were you able to incorporate that into what we have in front of us?
Yes, through the speaker. Thanks for the question, Deputy Mayor. Absolutely. As you know, we did have some challenges in our coordination with some work that the TTC was doing specifically within their right-of-way. And we have since gone through and done a complete assessment of how we do share information and ensure that we can have timely resolution and very early notification of projects as they come forward. And also to understand the scope and the impact on the right-of-way. And I think that was the real issue there, that we didn't quite have a full understanding of the impact based on the scope that we had before us. So we've corrected that. We have regular, sort of have reinstituted regular engagement with the TTC. We already have a very strong relationship with a number of our other partners and are building into the Strategic Capital Coordination Office additional and regular connection points with the utility companies that we work with. So I think there's been a fair number of lessons that have been learned from some of the actions that have happened over this past construction season. And they have been sort of built into the process flows for the Strategic Capital Coordination Office.
Thank you. One of the major issues that has been recognized here in this chamber, I know it's in my community and many of my colleagues share it, is that when construction causes the closure of sidewalks, bike lanes, road lanes, pushing pedestrians, active transportation, and cars into traffic or in places, that makes it a little bit more precarious. Can you speak to us a little bit more about the steps that are being taken in this plan to reduce those impacts and focusing on road safety around closures like that?
Through the speaker, I can speak to that matter. In terms of managing pedestrians and all road users through construction zones, there's requirements in the contract that the contractor make provisions and allowances for all road users as part of their plan or their traffic plan for the project. So that is a requirement, and they are required to make allowances and provisions for each one of them. Our goal is to continue to monitor and strengthen our oversight of that, of those actions, to make sure that they provide for safe access for everyone. There may be times when the construction requires specific and very localized changes to the way people maneuver around. But we, again, it's required to be in a safe manner and compliant with all of our, for all road users, for all pedestrians, no matter what their abilities.
So, sorry, is that new with this plan, or is that...
It currently exists within our contract language. And it is about oversight and making sure that our contractors are aware that that is a specific requirement.
So what is the enhancement and the improvement in this plan? Because we know that there have been these obligations before, but either they are not adhered to, not enforced to a great enough degree, or they're not assessed for their appropriateness.
Oh, yeah, through the speaker, if I can add to Jennifer's comments as well, too. Through the Construction Hub program, sort of the step beyond that we've been taking is looking comprehensively at multiple projects happening in and around the same time. So within each project, they've got specific implications. But it's when you have the compounded effect that I think there's a lot of the sort of complaints you may be hearing from residents. So with the development of the Construction Hub program, we are going to be moving forward with the additional funding through the fees to basically be doing a little bit more of a comprehensive audit. So again, looking at the mosaic of all the construction that's out there, some of it is city-led projects, some of it is private development. So we need to look at everything comprehensively and try to make sure that we keep things safe and reliable for everyone. And as part of that as well, doing a review from an accessibility perspective, which is also relative new.
Thank you. My final question is just on the benefits of traffic agents. I've seen their effectiveness across the city, but I can specifically speak to that in my ward, whether it's on King Street and Liberty Village, and I could go on. Can you speak to the demands on traffic agents right now and how we plan to address this through an expansion of the program to allow them to be in more communities across the city?
Through the speaker.
That was your last question.
Thanks for the question. Yeah, we've seen great successes with the traffic agent program. We currently have 29 traffic agents in the complement. We recently just hired another 50 traffic agents. And we're going through the process right now of basically training in them and bringing them on board. And you're right, it has been very challenging meeting the various demands around the city, especially when you need multiple traffic agents to cover a particular location. So the number of 30 traffic agents might seem significant, but against the number of locations, it really means that we can only handle a finite number of locations at any given time. But with the current plan, we are expanding the number of traffic agents. And by the spring of next year, we anticipate having roughly about 79, 80 traffic agents.
Thank you.
Councillor Carroll.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I just want to ask, I just wanted to put an answer on the record. I could come over there and do answers. I actually, my staff asked me to write a column about this, and so I started to read it. And, Madam Speaker, I don't know if you've done it yet, but I went down the rabbit hole and read all of this and then realized, oh, I don't know if I read all of it and went back and read the original, so, in order to write this column. But it is hard in reading it as someone who represents north of the 401 because of where congestion currently is and where we struggle with it most in the daily peaks. All of its examples that it gives are in the core or closer to the waterfront, where we have some of our pinch points. What I want to know is, this is a plan that takes us all the way to the end of 2026 thus far. Are we tracking things here and are we looking at where it might someday move its way out through the city? I have, for instance, an intersection that was once evaluated for a development and found to be, you know, on numbers of cars alone and buses eligible for a scramble. It's so congested with pedestrians and cars and buses. But I don't envision a traffic agent or warden showing up there anytime soon, even though we'd love to have one. Is there a plan to take these learnings and begin to fan them out over the rest of the city limits?
Through the speaker, yes, absolutely. And we actually have deployed traffic agents in a number of locations outside sort of the core. Certainly with the construction of the crosstown and having construction there where we've had some real challenges, especially with access to the Allen Road, as Councillor Cole will tell you. And so we've had, and that's not the only place we've deployed traffic agents when we've had that need. You know, because construction is moving into various pockets of the city that haven't seen it before. And so one of the things that we have learned in the last few years of creating and implementing our construction hubs, we started with one at Young and Eglington, but we've since expanded that program. We have nine now. And some of those will go away when the construction and the capital works are completed. And we will still look to move to other places in the city where that construction has started up. So Scarborough Town Center, the Golden Mile, out in Park Lawn, places that we know we're going to be having additional construction, both capital and private development in the same location, where we can utilize the resources and the learnings that we have from the downtown to support throughput in the neighborhood.
You just named examples that I would have thrown up as things that have to be looked at. The Golden Mile with all the construction and development that's going to be around that volume. And once the crosstown is operating through the middle of it. So the other thing is, from the first year to now, there's, we started, we got the SECO going. We had some victories on King Street with an early completion, so we know that works, and now it works. Is there, so we're presenting solutions here in the update. Here are the things we're going to do next. These are things that might help us, some fee changes and the things that SECO will do. Is there also, is there still a part of the team, the congestion management plan team, that's also looking at experimentation? So we're still absorbing, and it's these solutions and now it's just monitoring? Or are we going to keep looking for even more solutions?
Through the speaker, I think you just wanted to hear Roger talk about that, so we're going to...
Yes, I'd love to see Sir Roger talk about that.
Through the speaker, thanks for the question. Absolutely. We're always looking at new technologies. Earlier this year, we started initiative looking at new AI smart signals. And we're already starting to see successes with respect to that, and we'll be reporting on that going forward. Looking at rooftop cameras. There's a whole bunch of different technologies, specifically leading with respect to third-generation AI, that we are going to be reporting in subsequent months in terms of the successes there and our plans to continue rolling and expanding the program.
So the final question, Madam Speaker, would be then, are we also monitoring? We got no difference from that, so now we're moving on. There may be some things that don't actually give us a result.
Yes, absolutely. And I do think there's other upgrades that are taking advantage of some technology that's maybe not as sexy. Certainly, the upgrades to our RODAR system, the booking system with our QR codes, that's not necessarily brand-new technology, but...
I found it sexy.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. I'm with you, but, you know, not everybody does. So I do think that we can use those tools in maybe different ways to be able to help communicate more effectively with the public and also to focus in and have some more predictability about where the utilities are doing work, where the developers are doing work, how long they're going to do them, et cetera.
Thank you. We have time for one more question. Councillor Chang.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, a few days ago, my husband and children were in a car accident. And I was surprised to find out there were 40 car accidents in the last 10 years in that intersection. So I'm just wondering, what kind of data are we using to inform our decisions? Why is there no red flags that are generated when there are certain hotspots for incidents?
Okay, through the speaker. First of all, I'm sorry that happened, Councillor Chang. We have an online map, a Vision Zero map, that actually pulls live data about crashes by intersection. It applies to the entire city. It also talks about the nature of the crash, how it happened, what the mechanics of it were, who was impacted. And we use that information to readily review the locations and identify where changes need to be made. And very often, you'll see when we talk about a project, maybe that's doing a complete streets review, we'll talk about the number of crashes that happened in that location. And so having that available, that's something your office can access. But we do use it in order to sort of build our capital projects and where we need to make those changes and to make spot improvements as well.
It seems to me that platforms like Google Maps and Waze would have even more data than what we would be able to generate in terms of especially congestion, right? Because they're constantly tracking the speeds of how people are traveling through our city. Do they provide any data that we are able to access?
Through the speaker, yes. We actually have an agreement with Waze. And I know we use a Google platform as well. But we have an agreement with Waze to share data. And so we certainly, and that's been in place for at least the last five years, where we have an active data sharing agreement with them so that we can get information into our traffic management center that we are finding that's crowdsourced from users, and we can provide information to them about incidents that are happening on the ground.
Is there an opportunity to use AI perhaps to read that data to make some suggestions about how we can facilitate more smooth traffic, more movement in our city?
Great question, through the speaker, and maybe I tipped you off of that. Yeah, we're actually working on that as a pilot right now as we speak.
Oh, amazing. And, you know, at one point I heard that Young and Shepherd and Bayview and Shepherd were a couple of the worst intersection... were a couple of the worst intersections in the city. Apparently, it was in Toronto Life at one point. And I'm just wondering, you know, when can we get some love on traffic agents? Because, you know, I heard Counselor Carroll's questions, and just hoping that there can be an expansion, especially in areas of density, in particular, high-growth areas that have been designated by our planning division.
Yeah, through the speaker, absolutely. With the growth of the program and with the addition of, of the new traffic agents, we're going to be revisiting the warrants in terms of where we place traffic agents. And certainly, we would take a closer look at that intersection and make an assessment there.
And just wanted to clarify that the additional fees that could be incurred for lane closures won't apply to festivals, cultural events, any lane closures that are supporting our community economic and cultural activities.
Through the speaker, that is correct. It would not apply to them.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so before we recess, Counselor Fletcher, you want to release an item? Counselor Fletcher?
Yes, Speaker, it's the item on the ferries, and it's EX 17.3. I'd like to release that. There's nothing more to do on that.
Okay, recorded vote.
Record?
Yeah, recorded vote on electric ferries. Counselor Fletcher is, Counselor Holliday asked for a recorded vote. Yes. Okay, we're voting, Counselor Fletcher released EX 17.3, electric ferries. We're just recording, there was a request for recorded vote, that's what we're voting on. There's no motion, she's just releasing the item. Yeah.
Counselor Fletcher, may we have your vote, please? In the affirmative? In the affirmative? Counselor Perutza? Counselor Perutza, may we have your vote, please? Counselor Perutza, in the affirmative? Counselor Thompson, may we have your vote, please?
Yes, Madam Clerk, it's in the affirmative. Thank you.
Counselor Thompson, in the affirmative. Thank you. Counselor Morley, may we have your vote, please? Counselor Morley, in the affirmative. Thank you. The item carries, the vote is 22 to 2.
Okay, Counselor Fletcher, one last release.
Yeah, under TE 16.75, council direction on PH 1413, allowing time for a thorough review.
On what item?
TE 16.75. I'll continue to hold it.
Hold that, okay. Somebody said, hold it. All right. May I have a motion to introduce a confirmatory bill? So who wants to have the pleasure? Pardon? Mayor Chow, Mayor Chow?
Let Lee be granted to introduce bills to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceeding of City Council meeting 22 on October 9, 2024.
Thank you. Shall Lee be granted to introduce these bills? On favor, show fans, pose if any carried. Shall these bills be declared as bylaws and be passed subject to Section 226.9 of the City of Toronto Act 2006? On favor, show fans, carried. We're recessed tomorrow at 9:30.